Okay, today is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. It is 7:34 PM. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm Chair of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals and I'm calling this meeting of the Board to order. First, I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present from the Board of Appeals. Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Lenkett Holly.
Here.
Adam LeBlanc.
Yeah.
And Brad Baronowski.
Here.
Good to have you all with us. From the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our clerk and zoning assistant.
Here.
Have you with us. And then just to confirm on the cases. The first docket 3840, 29 Hemlock Street. Is Catherine Bender here? We're just voting on the decisions. There's no reason for her to attend. For docket 3845, 319 Appleton Street, Nicholas and Christina D'Onofrio. Again, we're just voting on their decisions. There's no reason for them to stick around. Docket 3822, 20 Pond Lane, Doug Troyer?
Yes, I'm here.
Have you with us. Docket 3830, 39 Woodside Lane. I don't know if Mary O'Connor is going to join us. They are requesting a withdrawal. Nope. Okay. For 3836, 103 Thorndike Street, Christopher Alson?
Present.
Have you with us. Docket 3843, 17 Brattle Place. We have Danielle and Jennifer White.
Present.
Have you with us. For 3844, 14 Washington Avenue, Sarah Alfaro Franco.
Present.
Good to have you with us. Docket 3849, 58 Edmund Road, Charles and Sharon Hannan.
We're here.
Have you with us. And docket 3847, 156 Brattle Street, John and Sally DeAngelis.
Present.
Present.
Good to have you with us. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March 28th, 2025, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June 30th, 2027. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who are participating by Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters. The Board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So as all of you have probably noticed, we have a very full agenda tonight. In order to try to expedite the meeting, I will be taking all the business items at the end of the meeting. Those are the administrative items. And then for the hearings, I'm going to take 39 Woodside first, then 17 Brattle Place, then 20 Pond Lane, then 103 Thorndike, and then proceeding through the new hearings. Anticipate the first two should be, we should hopefully be able to wrap up fairly quickly. 20 Pond and 103 Thorndike will take a little bit of time. So if you are, so probably the first two is probably 45 minutes between them. The other two are probably about 45 minutes each. If anyone who's been on the zoning Board of Appeals meetings before, I'm not a great judgment of how long things ought to take. So I can't provide a definitive time that the later items will be taken up. If you are here for those items, I encourage you to check in periodically so you don't miss your hearing. I will note that if your hearing is called and you're not available at that time, we will keep the meeting open and we will get to you this evening. So we may just scoot someone in front of you. So before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here's some ground rules for effective or clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves for themselves, make their presentation to the Board, then request that members of the Board ask what questions they have on their proposal. And after the Board's questions are answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the 20-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, going to the agenda. First item is 39 Woodside Lane. This is a continuation of a prior hearing. The applicant has filed a request to withdraw. That letter is available on Novus for people to review. So unless there's anything, any questions from the Board in regards to that, I will move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington accept the withdrawal of the application for docket 3830, 39 Woodside Lane.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the Board to accept the withdrawal, 39 Woodside Lane. Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So with that, move on to item eight on the agenda, which is docket 3843, 17 Brattle Place. This is a continuation of a hearing that started at our April 22nd meeting. The applicant was filed a request for a special permit to operate a home occupation at their property on Brattle Place. And at the end of the prior meeting, there were some questions the Board had that they had wanted to follow up with the town on. They sort of dealt with the question of the definition of a home occupation and how much sort of flexibility the Board had with what that definition implies. And then also what the Board would be able to grant if there was a determination that this wasn't actually a special permit. And so I've had a couple of meetings with the building inspector and also with with the legal department. And so just to bring the whites up to speed, so essentially the the request for a home occupation is a by right use in the residential districts. Unless there are clients or pupils that are that are on site. And as we had discussed this application, the the way that the site is being used, there's not a special permit. There are no pupils or customers on site because the nature of the business where you are going and picking up the dogs and bringing them back to your residence, having them there and then returning them, there are no customers or pupils on site. So a special permit is not actually required from the Board in order to operate this business. So really the question of whether it's a home occupation or not is really a question for the Inspectural Services Department. It is not a question that the Board really needs to decide. The alternative for the Board would be if the Board was to, could hold a vote on whether or not it considers it a home occupation. If it was to do so and the Board decided that it was not a home occupation, then there would be little the Board could do to or the town could do to assist you because it would be a non-conforming use, which is something that you can't get a variance for. So with those thoughts in mind, would just want to address the applicants briefly. If the, as Chair of the Board, I think it's in the best interest of yourselves and of the Board if we if the Board, because the Board is unable to grant a special permit and the Board is only, the zoning Board of Appeals is only allowed to take four actions. We can act on special permits, we can act on variances, we can act on appeals to the decision of the building inspector, and we can act on comprehensive permits. And where this would not be one of those things, it's a little, the Board really should be determining that there's not a special permit to be granted and to refer the applicants back to Inspectural Services to have further discussions about the use of the property as a home occupation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mr. Pat.
Mr. Hanlon?
I think it may be a little bit simpler to sort of go back to what the Chairman said about what we have the authority to do. We can issue special permits, variances, we can resolve appeals from the building inspector, and we can grant or deny comprehensive permits. And the only thing that's really before us today is whether or not to grant a special permit. And it turns out that if this is a home occupation, then we don't have jurisdiction to grant a special permit because it isn't required for this use. If this isn't a home occupation, we can't grant a special permit because the zoning bylaw doesn't allow us to grant a certain special permit in that situation. So whether or not this is a home occupation, in either event, we have to deny the permit. That is to say, we have to dismiss the permit, not say that it, I mean, basically because we don't have any jurisdiction to grant it. What we don't have the ability to do is to say, well, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to dismiss the special permit because this doesn't need a special permit or because it doesn't qualify for one. But meanwhile, we have some opinions as to whether or not this is a home occupation, which you may find useful. Just as like a court, we are not reaching out to just give advice that way. And I will say that at the end of the hearing, I was hoping that we would be able to come out in a different way because I did feel that the applicant had made a story that whatever is going on here is, I hesitate to say as strong a word as unjust, but it is an unfortunate thing that we wish would not happen in Arlington. And I wish it would not happen in Arlington. But under the circumstances, given our role in this overall system, we're not the agency that can fix it. And it's a question, actually a legal question, that is not necessarily clear whether what the right opinion would be coming from us. So it seems to me that the only thing that we can do at this point is to say, you can't have a special permit because there's no pathway that leads to that. You don't, you're not harmed particularly by not having a special permit because we would not reach the merits of whether this is a home occupation. And at that point, at that point, I don't actually know where you go from there, but I hope there's somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
Can I jump in?
Yes, please.
Please, Mr. White.
Yes, just so I'm clear. Based on your conversations with the building commissioner and the town's legal department, it sounds to me like you're saying that they consider us to meet the requirements of a home occupation.
So they haven't stated directly that they feel it's a home occupation. They have confirmed that if it is a home occupation, then there's no special permit that can be, that is required to be granted or that can be granted because it would be a by right use.
And so who will the, who will determine whether or not it's a home occupation? You're saying that that's in the hands of the building commissioner at this point?
So it goes back to the building commissioner and the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer for the town. So it's their call as to what the interpretation is of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. And he, just for the record, is the one that referred us down this path to apply for the special permit. But perhaps having subsequent conversations with you and the legal department, that it sounds like that isn't the appropriate route. And we're free to go back to him and ask for further guidance? Is that?
That is my understanding from talking to counsel.
I guess my confusion is, is that in order to get the commercial license, I have to be in an industrial zone, which is why I was asking for the special use permit. So whether I'm a home occupancy or not, a home occupancy that's not in an industrial zone does not qualify for a commercial kennel license, which is why I'm here to get a special use permit. So that, so I can't have a kennel even if I'm a home occupancy, if I'm in a residential zone, according to the bylaws.
So we only arbitrate the zoning bylaws and I do admit it's been a little confusing for us. The town bylaws, as they relate to canine control and the zoning bylaws, treat the question of kennels, in our opinion, differently, which has been part of the confusion.
Because there's no confusion on the part of the ACO or myself in that I have to be in an industrial or a business zone, which is why the building instructor said I had to go before the zoning board because it's a matter of what zone I'm in.
Right.
Not whether or not I'm a home occupancy. I qualified for a home occupancy before.
Yeah.
It's a matter of obtaining a commercial kennel license, in which case I'm in the wrong zone, which is why I'm before you.
Right. So the Board is allowed to act under the zoning bylaws for the uses that are listed for the districts that are given. The Board is not authorized to allow uses that are not allowable in the district, either by right or by special permit. And so the, the reading of the bylaw and going back and having additional conversations with the Special Services Department and with the legal department, it is our understanding that the route to this use is through a home occupancy, which is an accessory use that is allowed in residential districts. But we are not, the problem for us is that we can't grant you a use that is not allowed in the residential districts. We do not have that authority under town law.
Okay. So you can operate, you can operate a business in a residential zone if you fall under the category of home occupation.
That is correct.
You don't need to be in a business district to operate business X as long as it's considered a home occupation.
So it sounds like as long as the building commissioner considers us a home occupation,
the town can review us for a commercial kennel license or grant one should they see fit.
Then it would be up to whoever does the reviews under the town bylaws to make that determination. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So are you certain that when I go back to the building commissioner, he's not going to tell me I have to come back before you because this is a zoning issue? Because I feel like that's what I started with and he sent me to you.
Right. So unfortunately, my sense is that he sent you to us possibly to make a deter, I'm not entirely certain because it was, we go by what was filed with us. So it was filed for us as a special permit, which is something we're allowed to do. Unfortunately, there's nothing in the zoning bylaw that allows us to grant a special permit in this case.
Because we wouldn't need a special permit.
We're sort of hemmed in.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I.
Can I ask when the last time you talked to the building commissioner was?
Not yesterday. I guess it was Monday. Yeah. So I believe I spoke with him Monday. If it wasn't Monday, it was Friday. And then the legal department I spoke with this morning.
So in closing, is it the advice of this Board that I can just go back to the building commissioner tomorrow and reopen my discussions with him? And he's prepared for that as well?
So my recommendation is that you go back and talk to the building commissioner and, you know, say that the Board has found that no special permit is required if this is a home occupation. And then it's up to them to make that decision as to whether it qualifies as a home occupation.
Okay.
Okay. So now, and what you're saying again is that even if he says to me, you're not in the right zone, there's nothing you can do about it going forward regardless if I'm not in the right zone.
So if it's, if you need, if you want to operate a use that's not allowed in the zone, it would be, it's what's called a variance for use. And that is something that the town specifically has voted that it will not allow. And so it's in the zoning bylaws that we're not allowed to grant a variance for use. We can only allow uses that are allowed in the zone.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Chairman. Just wanted to make clear, just wanted to make clear that home occupation is the key to having this use in this zone. Okay. So if Mr. Chompas says this is a home occupation, then you can do it and it doesn't go through us at all because no special permit is needed for your situation. If he says it isn't a home occupation, then we couldn't grant you a special permit anyway because we would have no ability to say yes if the zoning bylaw says no. So you're sort of back arguing the question as to whether this is a home occupation and Mr. Chompas is the next person who has to rule on that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much for all of your time. This has been really interesting to see how this all works and to see you guys all play. I do have to admit, it's very, I do appreciate the time though. It's great.
It's been interesting for us too.
Yeah. I wish we could be more definitive with an answer for you.
No, no, I do appreciate the time and yes, thank you.
Right. So as Chair, I would move that the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Mr. Hanlon, would the correct term be dismiss public hearing for docket 3843?
Chairman, I think we're one step ahead of ourselves. I think we have never closed a public hearing. So it seems.
So we just want to close. Okay. So with that, then.
You may want to ask if there's anybody else here to address the application just to be sure, but but we need to close.
Well taken. Are there, are there any? Is there anyone else here to address this application? Seeing none. I will go ahead and move that the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington close the public hearing for docket 3843, 17 Brattle Place.
Second.
So roll call vote of the Board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So we are closed on 17 Brattle Place. And again, thank you to the applicants for being here. Appreciate your doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll jump back up to item number five on our.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, we've closed the public hearing, but we need to dismiss the petition without prejudice.
Nope. Thank you for that.
It's helpful. I move that we dismiss the petition in 17 Brattle Street without prejudice.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon and Mr. Dupont. So vote of the Board. This is a vote to dismiss this special permit application for public hearing, docket 3843, 17 Brattle Place. So roll call vote of the Board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so that that item is dismissed. Okay. Now we'll go back to item five on our agenda, which is docket 3822, which is 20 Pond Lane. This is a hearing that started a while ago. We've had several meetings on this hearing. Most recently, we had met on April 22nd. At that time, the applicant was going to have some conversations with, excuse me, the lawyer for the applicant was going to have some conversations with their client about the proposed conditions. And then possibly also speak with members of the buddy neighbors and then come back where we hope we could finalize the conditions and close the hearing this evening. So with that, I will turn to Mr. Troyer, who's the applicant's attorney, to bring us up to speed with where they are.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's nice to see everybody tonight. Thank you for your patience and allowing us to have these further discussions. I think we've made a lot of progress on the conditions at this point. With me tonight is Nick Boyt and his wife, who are the current owners of the property. Also have John Wheatley, who is the prospective purchaser of this and a potential user through his hardware store company, WR Shattuck. Last time we talked, basically, we went through in detail the proposed conditions by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, Mr. Chair, I have, I think it's just going to be easiest to kind of go through my response letter of May 8th. I can put it up or I don't know if you have it. I'm happy to do it to make it easy.
Ms. Ralston, can you go ahead and give Mr. Troyer the ability to share?
Right.
Okay. Give me a second. Are you able to see this?
We are.
We are.
Great. So this is my May 8th letter, which basically takes the conditions that the Board forwarded to me in early April and basically identifies and bold our positions on them. And then I have, and there's really only a couple at this point where we just have some tweaks that we would like to discuss with the Board and get Board reaction. I have reviewed certain comments from the Butters. And I believe that we have done everything that we possibly can to kind of take into consideration their concerns and the Board's concerns. And I think what this shows is a real reasonable solution to some of the concerns of which were addressed. So the first one, basically, we agree without any limitation to the commercial activities or limited to the hours, noted in the noise, but by law. Condition number two, this was discussed a lot last time. We were originally requesting up to a 26,000 square foot, excuse me, gross vehicle weight box truck basically to come in. We heard comments from both the Board and from the Butters. The main reason for the box truck was not to be on a daily basis. It was not to be something in which would be used normally. It was something that would allow a situation where there is a large delivery whereby the trucks and the plans that the applicant has would be multiple trips whereby this would just, this would just allow one, one vehicle trip. We heard that the box cars was not something in which the Board was really wanting to permit. So we kind of came up with some other, another option. But the Board also asked us to identify the trucks that we intend to basically come onto this property. Again, this is on an as-needed basis. This is for the hardware store when they need extra storage space for the respective businesses. So it's not on a daily basis. It's on an as-needed basis. The first truck, can you guys see on the left-hand side the photographs? So the first one is he has a Ford E250 van which weighs 8,900 gross vehicle weight. This is a typical van which they would utilize. He has a large Ford F, not he, the hardware store basically has a Ford F350 truck which weighs the maximum 14,000 gross vehicle weight. And then the photograph here is depicting another vehicle that would be utilized, a Dodge Ram 1500 truck, which weighs about 7,100 gross vehicle weight. These are the three vehicles that will be utilized on the majority of the time when there is a need. Uh, these are the three vehicles that will be utilized on the majority of the time when there is a need for uh, Mr. Wheatley to basically have uh, extra product to be delivered and stored uh, at the accessory garage at the location. Again, we're not going to have employees there uh, staffing on a day to day basis. This will be uh, you know, two, three, four employees coming uh, with these vehicles on an as needed basis to basically unload the product or pick up the product that they have stored there uh, to take back to to the uh, to the appropriate hardware store. Um, we, because as you know, what abuts us is a uh, is it it's a crew uh, area uh, that has a lot of crew storage of boats and things on those lines. And I believe that they u- utilize uh, trailers. I could be wrong. I'm not one hundred percent sure on that, but that's my understanding that they do. Uh, another option when we have large vehicle, when we have a large um, delivery which uh, would require, you know, four or five Ford pickup trucks or van trucks, uh, this would be an option that would allow my client to have just one delivery. Uh, this delivery would come onto the property, back up to the garage and it would, all the product would be unloaded uh, and loaded uh, basically in the garage area uh, onto this, onto this trailer. So this was a uh, this was an idea that we wanted to kind of propose to the board uh, to kind of get away from the uh, twenty six hundred square foot uh, box truck. Um, it it's an option to basically um, in the, in the event that there's large deliveries where we can avoid having, you know, four or five uh, vehicle trips in a day, we could basically bring this on on a one. We're happy to limit that as as some suggestions were made last week to, you know, uh, five times a year, ten times a year, once a month, something along those lines. We'd be amenable to adding that. Uh, I know that uh, some of the comments don't like anything other. Um, did not like uh, the trailer proposal and I know that they don't like the the uh, the twenty six hundred square foot box truck proposal, which are, you know, standard delivery trucks for, you know, anybody who would have a refrigerator or would have a uh, delivery from um, from somebody, those that that's that that's what would come there. So and we really tried to think of um, if we had a large delivery to try and avoid additional traffic, what what would be a good option for my client to have? And that's what we came up with. And so I was basically looking to um, in the condition, change it up to class one through five, which would get me up to nineteen thousand five hundred. But if there's an issue with that, we're fine with going up to classes one through three, which will be the fourteen thousand, which would uh, basically allow for all of the vehicles that my client currently has uh, to make these deliveries. And then if we could carve out uh, an exception of, you know, once a month for the for the trailer if needed, something along those lines. Uh, but I, for discussion purposes, I just went up to the maximum weight of uh, of the classes, which was nineteen thousand five hundred and that that's why that's there.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon? Mr. Hanlon?
Um, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing everything dumb. Uh, uh, but that's okay. I have a.
Hold, hold, just one second, Mr. Hanlon. One second, Mr. Hanlon. If there's anyone on the call who is not on mute, not actively speaking. All right, try again, Mr. Hanlon.
Good pleasure. Well, let's try, let's try. Um, um, the trailer has to be pulled.
It'll be pulled by one of the other vehicles that are identified. Um, um, not the van, but it would be, it can be pulled by uh, I believe both the Ford, uh, definitely by the Ford F three fifty. And and John, if you're on, uh, if I'm misstating anything, let me know. Uh, the Dodge Ram, I believe can can pull that trailer as well. But most likely, the 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 vehicle that would be pulling, that would be the uh, Ford three fifty truck.
Do you want to make a comment?
Uh, yeah, did I say that correctly, John?
Yes, yes, probably the white truck, the Ford pickup truck would be the tow vehicle, but. The trailer was an idea to alleviate trips. It appears to be, there's a lot of negativity towards it. So I'm not, I'm not. The the trailer is not, it was not.
I thought it would make things better, not worse. Okay. Mr. Hanlon, did I answer your question or do you have anything else? I apologize. Hello?
Mr. Hanlon, was there anything further?
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if Mr. Troyer could talk to you. I think this is, this is.
Yeah, let me get rid of it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, while while it's silent, am I, am I on now?
You are.
Can you hear me?
We can.
And if we're, if we move away from the trailer, my question is moot because I was really interested in, hey, the exterior dimensions of the trailer to see what it would be like to try to get it onto the property and off the property and whether somebody who took it in his head to go the wrong way and to try to cut up to Pleasant Street might try to get under the bridge and not make it. And so if, again, if we're not going to do the trailer, that's fine. The other thing is is that in the condition itself, it talks about the gross weight. And if you added the weight of the truck that pulls it to the trailer itself, that exceeds what was proposed um, as the gross weight for the quote vehicle, whichever that was going to be. So if we're really are actively dealing with the trailer now, then those questions are moot. Uh, but if the trailer is still on the table, then it seems to me I'd like to, it would be useful if the applicant could answer.
John, are you willing to just go with the three vehicles uh, as a condition? And if, at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I thought it would make things better because it, uh, less trips, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's really what, for everyone, for the board, that's, that's really what we were trying to.
Yeah, I don't even want to buy a trailer. The trailer is almost twenty thousand dollars. I don't even want to buy it.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so again, we were really trying to not basically uh, max out what we can do. We were trying to basically say, hey, look, there may be some max deliveries. If there's concern about traffic, this would alleviate uh, multiple truck trips. Uh, we don't believe this is going to happen often, but uh, we are fine to withdraw the trailer from it and just have, go back to classes one through three. Uh, fourteen thousand gross vehicle weight, which would then basically uh, uh, cover all three vehicles that my client currently owns through his hardware business that he would basically utilize. And these are, these are not large trucks. These are regular, regular sized vans and trucks, which I think is is extremely reasonable. Uh, and uh, we're hopeful that the board sees that we've really thought about this and and tried to, tried to bring this, bring this to um, to a reasonable condition. So we're happy to to lose the uh, the trailer.
Thank you, Mr. Troyer. Uh, so moving on to condition three?
Condition number three, um, uh, basically, we uh, I just basically changed the names. Uh, you had the one hardware store. I changed it to WR Shattuck and Company Inc. and added owner um, to that. Uh, we're absolutely fine with that. That was just really uh, some, some changes. Um, and then basically identified that, you know, the owner of the property and WR Shattuck, uh, you know, are able to um, have have vehicles on property. And then at the end, I just threw in, just to, just because this isn't going to be a new special permit and we are in R two, I wanted to basically say that, you know, nothing precludes the accessory garage on a property to also be utilized for any residential storage purpose permitted within R two zoning district. Just so that it's clear that uh, uh, residential use of that garage for lawnmowers or things like that, that a natural residential use can also be made. I don't think it's necessary, but because we are being as specific as possible, I wanted it to be clear.
Absolutely.
Uh, condition number four, uh, we agree. Uh, I just changed it from the uh, the Want to Make Your Hardware to WR Shattuck. That's it. Conditions five, six, seven, we are in complete agreement. We have no problems with that. Uh, again, uh, we don't anticipate there being more than four people on the site at the time of deliveries. People are not working there. They're not going to be staying there. They're only going to be be there when they're basically coming and going with deliveries. That's it. Number eight was of big discussion last time. We were going back and forth about, I tried to get it up to ten. I can't remember exactly where we were, but it was much higher. Uh, and conversation with my clients and and what he believes, uh, we are absolutely fine that the number of vehicle trips in connection with the commercial use of the property is not to exceed six trips per day. Uh, so in essence, we are in agreement with uh, with that condition. I just added that the vehicle trips for uh, the six trips uh, related to the commercial use, residential trips uh, wouldn't be included in those trips. So that's why I I made that clarification.
All right.
Uh, condition number nine, I uh, let's see. You had the granting of the special permis supersedes all previous grants. Uh, we, I moved that to the end. Uh, but because what I indicated last time, we are in a P and a purchase and sell agreement. Uh, if in fact, for some, if this, if this board grants us a special permit, uh, doesn't become effective until uh, we record it. And that gives us enough time to basically proceed with closing of this, which is contingent upon uh, a special permit being granted to allow them to continue with the commercial use. So I wanted to just be clear that uh, this decision shall be recorded in the Middlesex County Registry of Rights within sixty days after certification, no appeal, and a true photocopy shall be submitted to the zoning board appeals. Failure, due show shall render this special permit null and void. So if if something happens with the closing, uh, you don't have to record and it's null and void. Uh, and then I added, upon recording with the registry of this special permit, this special permit supersedes all previous grants. So I kept what the board had, but just put it in some clarification given the circumstances. Uh, condition ten was another uh, big conversation which we had last time. Uh, we are in agreement uh, to basically limit it uh, as the board has proposed. But I just wanted to be be clear, and I think there may be some confusion with some of the uh, the letters in which I saw. All we're basically saying, and the reason I added, once the property is sold to Mr. Wheatley and Karen Wheatley, uh, I didn't want this condition to come into effect before we actually uh, sold that property because closing is going to happen after. So that's why I added that sentence.
Yep.
Then at the end, I just added what I believe is 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 the case no matter what, but just to be clear, uh, if we want to, basically, it will terminate at the time that they sell, uh, they are re-rent or something else, but I just want my clients to have the ability to come back to the board to seek an amendment, uh, so that the board, we can go through this process. If they do intend to basically want to sell to another commercial use, we can't do it without coming back to the board. And that's just merely putting, like, just putting some rights for my client to put in, which I I thought was fair. And because we're trying to be as specific as possible, I just wanted to make sure that that was something uh, that was okay. Uh, the rest of the conditions we had already agreed to and are in agreement to. Uh, so in essence, we really took a hard look. Uh, I really talked to my client to really say, hey, how are you really going to use this thing? Do you really need uh, this amount of trips? Do you really need that? And what this board has heard is that he doesn't envision coming to to the site on a day to day basis. He envisions coming to the site uh, on an as needed basis when he has extra storage stuff and and wants to, this is a unique property that allows him to basically store store certain commercial property. We have brought down the types of trucks, uh, which are quite honestly, uh, uh, the two uh, Ford uh, pickup trucks are owned not only by commercial people, but also a lot of residential people have those trucks. Vans uh, is the largest vehicle that we have, even though it's uh, lighter weight than the uh, the bigger truck, but uh, that that is a, that that has a little bit more storage opportunity in it and it's also indoor storage, uh, bringing things over. So we feel like we have really listened to the abutters. We've really listened to this board and have and are hopeful that this board um, sees that uh, this use has been in existence for a while. This is a uh, property owner that is coming to the board because he wishes to sell his property and allow for the commercial use that uh, has been utilized of this property, but maintain it in a reasonable uh, manner going forward. That's more akin to the original uh, grants of this back in the sixties. And uh, I saw some other letters that 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 talked about that this is an increase in commercial use, uh, that it's seven days a week, you know, so on and so forth. This, that's, that's not what we have represented. This is basically um, this is a use uh, uh, that is probably a lot lighter uh, than what Mr. Boyt utilized it for. Mr. Boyt, uh, when he has owned the property, had a cleaning company in there. He had Briggs um, basically storing their their vendor vehicles there. Uh, he had multiple tenants in there basically storing vehicles, a cleaning company running operations. This is a sole proprietor who's basically purchasing the property uh, to basically utilize it for, it's a, to to store some extra uh, materials for his uh, commercial businesses. He has his own uh, storage facilities, but there are times that there could be some extra product that he wants to have the ability to basically store there. Uh, we feel that this is uh, the best kind of user that could go in there. It's clearly a better user than has historically been in there over the years from the auto body shop to all the other stuff. And we're hopeful uh, that the board uh, sees that we really have tried to work with you and the abutters to uh, to basically allow my client to 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 legally, you continue to utilize this property in a manner uh, that is reasonable. Uh, and we have some set conditions that I believe are reasonable to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troyer. Um, just to confirm with you, um, and also for um, the people who are following this. Um, so condition number five, no retail sales, retail deliveries or retail transfers may take place on the property, which is a condition you've agreed to. Our understanding is that product that is coming, that is being sold to uh, to Shattucks will be accepted at one of Shattucks' locations. Um, and then if there's extras, if it cannot all be accommodated at that site, that's the time at which it would be transferred uh, using the company's own vehicles to the storage facility, stored there. And then when they need it again in the store, they would come with their own vehicles, pick it up, bring it back to the store, and the sale would take place the store.
Correct.
Yep, perfect. That was, that was what we had hoped to understand was, I just wanted to confirm that everyone was in agreement that that was going to be the procedure. Um, are there any additional questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Uh, my question has to do with the last of the condition. And I think there's a substantive difference, at least between the view I took of that condition and have been taking of it and uh, the applicant uh, approach now that is kind of obscured by the reasonable soundingness of the applicants can maintain or the applicants can apply if they want to uh, for an extension of the special permit, notwithstanding the change in ownership or the or the rental of the property. Um, one of the objectives that the board has had in this proceeding has been to eventually uh, time out this exceptional use, which is probably no longer allowed under the zoning by law, even by special permit. Um, and ultimately therefore bring the R two district here back into an R two use. And so part of the purpose of this, of the privilege that we put in there, the, what we started with in the discussion was that this was an amortization thing, that we, the applicant has had the use of this for what, fifty years or so? Um, has sometimes not, not the applicant, but other owners have have uh, gone further than what was permitted. But in any event, uh, it's been there for a long time. Uh, it has gone from a period where this was an active commercial site, where you had a railroad that was functioning there to a place where it's part of a complex neighborhood, the part of, an R two part of the neighborhood. And we sort of thought that that fifty years plus the next ownership would be enough and it would be time to restore this property to the ordinary use of the uh, the zoning by law. Now, the applicant can, of course, can apply for anything the applicant wants to do. So in that sense, this condition doesn't give the applicant any right that the applicant uh, doesn't already have. But the subtext underneath it is the applicant can can apply to do it and would be entitled to get an amendment of the um, the amendment of the special permit that's at issue right here. Um, even if it does not comply with the zoning by law as it stands today. And that's the critical thing. Because I think our intention. Because I think our intention to begin with was that whatever, whatever sort of vested interest that one may have in a special permit issued fifty years ago, it's over. And that once you have this period of time expire, then you could get a special permit if you wanted to. You could try, you could apply. But it would depend upon the zoning by law as it existed at that time, whether or not we could grant that, grant that amendment. And I'm pretty sure the applicant has in mind the opposite. That by allowing for an amendment, the grandfathering that goes back to nineteen sixty-three or whenever it was would continue and that this could, could would say not a non-conforming, but could continue as an anomalous loose use indefinitely. And that's a problem. And I think we need to be able to to deal with that. Now, maybe the answer is sort of adding one thing that this would be true for Mr. Wheatley to do this, but that the, the language doesn't preserve that right for a subsequent owner. Maybe that's the right way to do it. Maybe we need just the face up to at some point or other, we're going to have to stop allowing the commercial use in the R two district. It's just not going to go on forever. And we need to figure out a way, a fair way to do that. We thought that the fair way to do that was to make it okay for Mr. Wheatley, but not to, not for his successors. But the issue is a little bit evaded by the subtle differences in language here of whether or not we're, and to what extent we're preserving the grandfathered status of the property. And I think we need to, to focus directly on that.
Mr. Hanlon, um, this is a, a side question. So assuming that Mr. Wheatley goes to sell this property fifteen, twenty years from now. Is including specific references to the zoning by laws exist today problematic?
I think that, I mean, I may not be reading the
It's more a concern of is including specific references to specific law. A problem, I guess we do it under certain condition twelve, we mentioned, we specifically cite chapter and verse two, so.
I don't really, I don't really particularly mind that, but you know, the thing is, is that MGL forty A section six doesn't apply here. Because this isn't a prior non-conforming use. Very definition, the very fact that they originally got a special permit indicated that it's not a non-conforming use. Eight, one, one, A and three, well, three, three, we always apply. I don't think eight, one, one, A does either. I mean, ultimately, the question here is what the scope of the special permit is. We could. It would be within our, our ability as, as retaining continuous jurisdiction to today, say that we won't grant this except that under, you know, that we won't grant this unless it's authorized as the bylaw is today. And the, the applicant could say, okay, then we withdraw our application and then we're stuck with the permits that have already been granted unless we were to terminate them. What we've done is attempted to push that way out into the future, but at the end, we would like to have a situation where the zoning by law as it is, authorizing special permits where it authorizes them would be the thing we'd use to, to, to to govern whether or not an amendment would be appropriate. And since it seems likely that the zoning by law as it is today would be continued, that this use would probably not be allowed by special permit under the zoning by law if you were starting fresh. And that's where the amortization of the, of the non, of the non-conforming use comes in. But I think it's really important to realize that we're not dealing here with, with statutory non-conforming uses. This is not a prior non-conforming use. Whatever grandfathering status it has, it has because our predecessors granted that in a by law, in a, in a special permit decision and didn't put any limits on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
May I respond real briefly?
Briefly, Mr. Turner.
Yep. So section eight point, one, point, one, A basically says, accept as provided in this section, this bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun or to a building permit or special permit issued before the first public should have noticed the bylaw December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. This use was granted and pursuant to the language is lawfully in existence or lawfully begun because it was legalized by the board in sixty-three to basically have a commercial use there. So I would, I disagree that it's not a pre-existing non-conforming use. I don't think it's necessary to continue with it. I just wanted to basically identify where I'm coming from. As, as your own bylaw basically says that a use that was lawfully in existence prior to December fourteen, two thousand seventeen, we can basically seek a special permit as we are today for finding that what we're looking to do to change is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than not. With that said, the other concern that I have is forty-eight, six allows for pre-existing non-conforming uses to continue. And by putting in an end date, I'm not sure if it's legal or not, but in order to avoid that, what I basically proposed was we will agree to this condition going in. We just want to have the opportunity in the event my client wants to sell the property to come back to the board and, and determine whether or not that board at that time under those bylaws will allow for a this continued use to, to proceed. And I already had that right to do it, but I wanted to clarify in this. That, that's where I'm coming from. And I think it's, it's, it's us basically saying, we will agree to this condition once it's sold to, to the Wheatleys. It shouldn't come into effect until after that sale. And then, uh, so I agreed to the condition entirely. And then I just wanted to basically make clear, hey, this has been around a long time. I understand that the town's goal is to terminate any prior existing commercial uses in an R two district, but I think it turns forty-eight, six on the head. I think there's legal issues in it, but we'll agree to it. But at the same time, I want to say, hey, we still want to be able to come back to the board at that time and have an opportunity to basically see if, you know, this commercial use as it has been, can it continue to a new owner? If not, the board at that time, under a whole new public process, under the, whatever bylaws are in effect at that time, can make the decision at that time. That's all that we're, that's all that we're really looking for here.
Mr. Hanlon.
I wonder if under those circumstances, if we said something in that condition like pursuant to MGO chapter forty A and the town of Arlington zoning by laws as they may exist at that time.
That's acceptable to me.
The final sentence, notwithstanding the above, da-da-da-da-da, accessory building pursuant to MGL forty, chapter forty A, section six.
Oh, just forty A, just forty A.
Forty A and the town of Arlington zoning by laws as they exist at that time.
I agree to that.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments from the board? Seeing none. Before I open tonight's meeting for public comment, uh, here's some ground rules for effective and clear conduct. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant, oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong section. I'm now going to open the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the react tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair. You'll be asked to give your full name and address for the record, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions or comments have been addressed or a period of twenty minutes has elapsed, the public comment period will be closed. So with that, are there members of the public who wish to address this hearing? If so, please open the react tab at the bottom of the screen and select raise hand. This time I do not see any members of public who wish to address this application. There we go. So the first name I have is Paul Creedon. If you could give us the name and address for the record and you can address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I raised my hand first again. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to start by saying that I appreciate.
I just need your name and address to the record.
Oh, sorry about that. Paul Creedon, eleven Pond Lane.
Thank you.
Uh, so I just want to start by thanking the applicant and their attorney for all the work they've done to respond to the comments made by the board and also by the applicant, by the butters. Um, I think it shows that they're, they're listening and they're they're aware of what our concerns are. I just, um, also want to express my gratitude that we've removed the idea of the trailer from the conversation. I want to make sure that I state that I'm, that was my primary concern with the amended conditions was the addition of a trailer. I know that the boys and girl, or the crew team uses a trailer to move the boats. It's about twice a year. It's a, it's a spectacle. I see it from my window. It's, it's not easy to navigate a trailer on that narrow street. It's only twenty feet wide. A trailer would just be difficult. I have no issue personally with deliveries made by those, the two pickup trucks and the vans mentioned. So I want, I want to, you know, thank the, the applicants for making that, those changes. Just a couple of comments that I want to make. One, I think that some of my previous comments made in previous meetings might have been misconstrued by the applicants. In no way am I blaming the current property at twenty Pond Lane or any future use on the traffic that happens on Pond Lane. Traffic is traffic. It happens. Um, I'm not suggesting that the property is to blame for that. I'm not suggesting that the current owners haven't done considerable work to make the property more beautiful and have been great neighbors. And that's not my suggestion at all. My concern at the very core of it is around safety. It's around safety for my kids. It's around safety for my family and other people who use the sidewalks and the streets to get around. We are in a residential district and this property may have had a previous special permit for commercial activity. I want to make sure that any future commercial activity is done in a responsible way that does not lead to more dangerous situations on our street. Again, not blaming any other activity on the, on the property. I just want to speak to any future commercial activity. So with some of my concerns, especially around the trailer alleviated, I have two remaining concerns. One is around enforcement. So I'm, I'm fully behind the idea of Mr. Wheatley taking over this property because he is a known person in the community. And I know that I can reach out to someone that I know if I have concerns. Unfortunately, I cannot rely on the Arlington Police Department to enforce traffic regulations on, on the street because, you know, they've got other concerns. And, you know, it just isn't enforced on our street. So I'd rather reach out to someone that I know. And having had a conversation with Mr. Wheatley before, I support him as a future owner of the property. The other concern that I have is in terms of days of deliveries and hours. I want to make sure that it's within reason, within business hours, not on weekend when there's a lot of use of going down to the pond, a lot of people walking down there, my kids, you know, riding their bikes, walking down the sidewalk. I don't want it to be six deliveries on a Saturday morning. Um, I want to, you know, advise the, or recommend to the board that they consider a condition requiring restricted hours of delivery. Yeah, and that, that's all I have to say. I appreciate the, all the applicant has done to, to work with us. I know it's been a long process and I appreciate their patience and listening to the, the abutters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creedon. Next on our list is Dave Stansted.
Hello. I'm a relatively new engagier in this process. My neighbors brought me into it.
I just need your name and address for the record. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Dave Stansted, my, uh, my address is sixteen Avon Place. Having, the one thing that I'm most concerned about is what Mr. Hanlon brought up is the idea that we want to bring this area back to a true residential area. Having lived here for sixteen years, this is a dangerous street. Pond Lane is a very dangerous. I walk my dog. I walk my kids on there. I mean, multiple times a week, multiple times a week. And it is, you take your life in your hand already, walking through that tunnel, walking, walking down that road. People fly down there. And I guess, you know, everything Paul said, I was not aware of, you know, Paul, thank you for, for making those, those comments. I want to be very careful about what I say. I just want to say that I'm really concerned about the commercial activity, the more that we could make this residential, the more that we can make this safer for kids. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of kids that are on that street every day. And I, I just want this board to be really, really, really aware of who's on that street. People, their dogs, their kids, kids are riding their bikes and like, whatever we can do to limit commercial activity, I would really approve that. I, that said, Mr. Wheatley, I'm a big fan of Shattuck. I think you guys do a great job. And I, this is not about you. It's about a, a portion of the town that really was never meant for commercial activity. And I don't like, it sucks that people did this fifty years ago and, and, and changed the, the character of the neighborhood. But I think that whatever we could do to kind of get it back to a residential situation would be much in my view beneficial. So thank you for hearing me. Uh, again, I, I know that you guys have probably gone through all of this a lot. It's been, it's been a year-long process, so I apologize if I'm retreading, you know, things that you guys have already handled, but that's all I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming on. Next is Marion Satomer.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. I'm Marion Satomer, nine Pond Lane. So I wanted to say, I actually looked just now at the documents in the docket for this, and I had sent a letter and I don't see it in there. Highly possible. I sent it to the wrong place. That would be very in character for me. But I did want to just say that very similar to what Paul said is that I am really pleased with the, the progress that has been made on making this application more respectful of what both the butters and the board has, have been trying to do. And really, all of the issues in my letter have been addressed. Except for, for one thought that I, I would like to, to hear more comments on. At the last meeting, there was an idea brought up by a, a board member that in addition to a, a, a limit on number of trips per day, that there also be a, a number of days allowed for there to be trips be considered. And I thought that was a great idea. And I would just like to hear if the board has more input about that. Like Paul, before I give up the mic, I do want to say how much I appreciate the Boites and their lawyer and Mr. Wheatley. And I am looking forward to him as a neighbor. I think he's, you know, other people have already said he's a, a good member of the community at large, and I, I think it will work really well. I just want to make sure that the, the details continue to focus on safety in the neighborhood. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to, just to clarify, so the about concern about the number of trips, was it that somebody had mentioned limiting the number of days or that they had said something about the number of trips per day? I wasn't sure which you were speaking to.
There was number in addition to limiting the number of trips per day, but that over time there be a limit to how many like days a year or days a month that was just made as a comment and there was not really discussion of it to try and pin down some, some language and potentially add that. I think it'd be a good addition. Otherwise, I'm really happy with the way things have moved on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
I was the one who was guilty.
I was the one who was guilty about, on that one. Uh, at the time, the applicant was asking for ten trips per day. And because he said, then Mr. Troyer said, we didn't, we won't often need that. But we may occasionally need to have more than six. And so previously, there was just six. And uh, I had suggested that if you only occasionally needed it, why don't you agree to ordinarily, you just have six? And if occasionally you needed more, you could have that a limited number of times. Three times a year, five times a year, whatever, whatever made sense. The applicant today has come back and just endorsed the lower number. Uh, the, the minimum that we were always talking about. So in some ways, you know, offering, offering ten a limited number of times a year might be a step in the wrong direction. Uh, and so in some ways, my suggestion is now been kind of overtaken by events.
Actually, Mr. Hamlin, that wasn't the, the point from last time that I'm referring to. Somebody else from the board. Yeah, no, it's not your fault. Um, and um, i- it was another board member who made a comment that um, that there should be in addition to how many per day, that they look at how frequently over time keeping whatever the limit per day is, but there be a limit um, set around how many days different, how many, the number of days um, within reason uh, for visits to come. Does that make sense? Am I more clear?
Yep. I understand. I get that. Yeah, thank you. We'll come back to that after. Uh, the next on our list is Mr. Steve Moore.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, uh, Piedmont Street. Um, I, 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 I want to uh, applaud all the participants here at the um, the compromise seems to be being reached. I know that it's been a long, arduous process, but honestly, this is so tricky that having everyone involved and having folks be willing to uh, sort of bend and compromise has been, I think, absolutely critical to making this, this work, at least for now. Um, I, I do want to uh, also uh, support what Mr. Handel was speaking towards, which is trying to bring this back into conformity of the R two in time. I think, I think keeping, keeping that long, long view uh, in, in perspective, but, you know, there is important. Um, because this will just continue to be problematic uh, and on to the, you know, unending future unless that, that is done. Um, I, I, I had mentioned before though also, and this uh, support for Mr. Creedon was having to say, perhaps considering not doing these trips on the weekend. Uh, the weekend is when this is going to be busiest. Um, weekdays during the days, people work, the kids are in school. It's a little less busy that way. But on the weekends, it will be busy and, and since this is such a tricky traffic area, um, it might, you might want to consider a limitation sometime around the weekend, uh, limitation from doing the trips on the weekend days. Uh, and finally, um, last time, uh, Mr. Samantha, which I can see has his hand up, uh, had some serious concerns and I, I, I'm looking forward to hearing what he has to say uh, now. Um, just because uh, I, I think it, addressing some of those concerns, uh, his concerns is critical and I, so far, I seem to hear that some of this is being addressed and I would like to hear how he feels about that. And uh, depending on that, I may want to speak again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, Michael Simmer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Michael Simmer. Uh, I live on Fifteen Pond Lane, directly across from Twenty Pond Lane. Um, yeah, I, I don't know where to begin. It's been a very exhausting six months. This all started in October. Uh, and I feel like um, at least formally, the ha- we have been getting closer to something that is written down, but it, it still feels to me that whatever is being said is not matching what is going to be written into the special permit. Um, specifically when uh, Mr. Troyer is outlining the story of that this is only being used on an as-needed basis, which is kind of um, very vague when it, uh, like when it comes to like, what does as-needed mean? Does it mean once a week, once a month? Once every couple of months? Um, in the, in the permit, what is going to be written is six times per day, right? So that's kind of wha- what I take issue with, that um, there's a story that we are being told, but then in the permit, uh, much more extensive use than previously allowed uh, is going to be allowed. So who's to say that Mr. Wheatley is not going to buy two more stores in the future and then is actually going to use up all this six times per day and will change his opinion about what was being told today? So I feel like uh, this is con- this continues to be my biggest issue because what is written into the permit is going to be what needs to be followed and what needs to be um, uh, also enforced. And I also share uh, Mr. Creedon's opinion about enforcement. I have no trust in the enforcement of this policy. Um, and giving a lot of leeway uh, in the special permit um, uh, will just set the stage for continued abuse. Um, because what is really going to happen if um, um, more deliveries are going to happen on weekends, uh, on holidays, during busy times of the day and so on and so forth. Uh, so I think that's one point. And then another point was made about non-conforming users. Um, well, if it's the position of Mr. Troyer that this is non-conforming use, then it has been abandoned since. So um, nothing should, it hasn't been used, the, the property hasn't been used within the last two years, so it has been abandoned. Um, and I, I'm, I'm also asking further the question then, what, what is the process to the, tonight, right? The, uh, the board is going to issue a new special permit. And I feel like what is going to be written into the special permit is a massive expansion of what was previously allowed in the nineteen sixty-seven special permit, uh, which originally had um, up to two employees on site, one truck. Uh, and it was described as very passive use in the special permit. Um, what we are going to have here today is up to four vehicles or now three vehicles, uh, I would assume, um, six times per day with four employees on site. Um, this just raises concerns because it, it represents a massive expansion of what pre- what was previously allowed. Um, and yeah, we also talked to a lot of members of the community over the last week. Um, we created a petition in terms of that reflected um, kind of the latest knowledge of what we had, what it was um, uh, being requested from the board. Uh, and talking to those members, not only park users who frequent the park, but also people in the community, residents and the butters who live here, uh, all have strongly opposed uh, this expansion of use. Um, and I think um, there is not really a compromise when you lower it from ten to six times per day. This is not really a meaningful or material change. What would be a material change is uh, if uh, only two deliveries per month would be allowed and only um, during the week and during business hours, uh, and not uh, when children are around and going to school or uh, when um, uh, the rowing club is out and about. Um, like further limitations need to be imposed, I feel like, in order to make this really feel like um, number one, what the story was being told to us and number two, to make it feel like a compromise and what should be acceptable by the community and what also would be more in line of what was uh, previously allowed by the nineteen sixty-seven special permit. Um, yeah. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now we have uh, Kirsty Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Kirsty Bennett Bennett. I live at forty-nine Pond Lane. Um, I also want to say I appreciate that the petitioner is not responsible for the traffic on Pond Lane, but you know, for those of us who live here, the traffic problem is a daily reality. Um, I'm a parent, I have young children. We're a stone's throw from Spy Palm Park, but they can't walk around the corner by themselves because it's not safe. Um, I don't think we should be expanding commercial activity in such a high-trafficked area. Uh, this is a roadway with multiple choke points and it presents a real danger to pedestrians, to the cyclists, to the rowers, and more importantly, to all of the children that use this space. I also want to um, point out that the town has invested so much very successfully in making Spy Palm Park a beautiful and inviting recreational space. I want to shout out the friends of Spy Palm Park who work so hard to maintain the shoreline and keep the native plants in good state and it's become a destination for families from across Arlington. It's like a, it's a jewel of our town. It's not the same space that it was in nineteen sixty-three and I believe that it should be returned to R two zoning. Um, adding regular truck traffic in a narrow space, two hundred feet from a playground that's designed for three-year-olds and an ecologically fragile waterfront would just irrevocably change the character of this neighborhood. And it undoes so much of the town's good work to create a beloved natural space that Arlington can really be proud of. I've heard tonight from Mr. Troyer that we don't need to worry about daily deliveries, but the fact remains that once the special permit is issued, we lose control over how many deliveries there are. Um, if the petitioner doesn't need access seven days a week, then that should be stated in the permit. And I would just want to say that I agree with all of Mr. Simmer's comments about more specific restrictions in any special permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, you have John Cronin?
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, John Cronin, twenty-nine Wyman Terrace. Um, I want to speak in support of this special permit. Um, I think that this, traffic is traffic and I think that the amount of incremental traffic from this um, from this warehouse or this storage facility actually is being overstated. I think you're going to see more, I think you see more traffic from Amazon, USPS and UPS on a daily basis on either side of, of Pond Lane, on the bridge. Um, I think that a couple of trucks, maybe every other day is not going to be significant. I think there's more, there's more traffic from oil trucks, delivery trucks, moving vehicles, um, delivery trucks for furniture and, and fixtures. I mean, uh, the, that whole area was an industrial area in my lifetime. I mean, in my lifetime, there was the B and M Railroad that had six trips a day. Um, on that rail line, there was the Alton Pipe and Supply, which occupied the land where the crew team has all their um, boats. That was a, a thriving business with daily activity with big trucks, small trucks and plumbers. There was the Anderson Window Company where the uh, condos are. There was a mobile gas station where the Duncan Dolance is. There was an Exxon station where the uh, abandoned um, apartment building is. There was a machine shop where the yoga studio is and there was a funeral home at the top of the street, which is pretty busy. So you know, as a, as a commercial area, it was a lot busier in my lifetime. And I just think that this is a very passive use for this building. I think that as a storage facility, you may have a, a, a visit every now and then, but if you're going to keep, keep putting these restrictions, I think that you need to have a reality check on this. And also, I mean, the assessor already realizes, it's already classified this as a repair garage. I mean, it's classified as, as the assessors and they're paying taxes on it. This is not going to be used as a repair garage. It's going to be used as a, a, a storage area. So I just think that, you know, we just need to step back and i- if you make this too onerous, it's not going to be worth the effort. And I just think that this has gone on for six months is long enough. I just think that I encourage the board to bring this to closure and you know, if there's any, any problems or any real issues caused by the storage facilities, then you can revisit that later. But I just think that it's time to bring this to closure. Um, I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Um, gonna call on Mr. Dempsey. Um, and then it's, there's um, let's see, there's one other person who wants to speak for a second time. Uh, we are sort of at the limit for the amount of time we're going to provide for this, but I do want to hear from Mr. Dempsey. So um, Mr. Dempsey, if you could go ahead.
It's great. Thank you very much. I just have a clarification question I have. And that is whether this operation takes place just on the owner's property or on the strip of land that belongs to the town um, at the side of the garage. Um, the previous.
Sorry, Mr. Dempsey, I need your address for the record and then I'll.
Sure. Three Pond Terrace.
Three Pond Terrace. Perfect. Thank you.
Just around the corner there.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Troyer, um, just confirmation that um, this, the use of this property by the owner will be limited to um, the, the site and the garage, but not the strip of land that um, is owned by the town that's adjacent.
No, it's uh, just their property. Just their property.
Great. Can that be written in somewhere?
It is actually.
It is actually one of the conditions.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Um, great. Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Um, Ms. Satomer, did you have something new or is your hand just up from before?
Um, I did just want to clarify something based on what I've heard since I spoke. And I just wanted to say I'm not opposed to this permit. I, I, I feel like it's uh, I'm in support of it going forward, but I do feel strongly that the details, other people have also spoke, spoken about um, the need for some uh, specificity. And I just hold to my comment about how many times, uh, how many days over time visits are allowed to be made would be a good addition. And um, I think that it's just one more detail that I think can be cleared up. I know other people have more concerns than that too, but that was, I just wanted to clarify that I'm not against this happening. I just wanted to be safe for everybody in the neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Um, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period uh, for this hearing. Uh, appreciate everyone's comments. Um, the, the two things that I have specifically noted, um, one was the, this question about whether um, the, the limit to six trips a day should be um, amended to include sort of a, a sort of a more broader, overreaching um, constraint. Um, and the second is the, had been mentioned a few times is the, the question of enforcement and how that will happen and how we can sort of, how we can make sure that happens. Um, in regards to the first one, I've just, I, the board could look into something like that, but my concern is it sort of falls then, then to the second is how do we enforce it? Um, you know, we can't be out there absolutely checking every single time a vehicle goes on and off the property. Um, and so I, I think what we have right now um, with a limit per day is something that um, you know, the, the owner will have, obviously have the owner will ask if they can keep track of the number of trips um, and be willing to provide that information uh, to the board um, as a way to just sort of to check that. Um, and we can, I'm assuming that if there are issues um, that the public identifies those uh, requests for enforcement will be made uh, through the Inspector Services Department, which is the the appropriate vehicle for um, when there's something that relates specifically to the operation um, and the enforcement of a special permit. Um, are there additional questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, one thing that we should not forget is that uh, we have continuing jurisdiction over the special permit grant. And if we're in a situation where for whatever reason, whether it's because of the activities of the applicant or because of other things that may happen in the neighborhood, the underlying conditions that uh, that underline this uh, no longer apply, uh, we have the ability to reopen that and to take whatever action is, is necessary in order to deal with it. Now, Mr. Troyer has told us over and over again, and I'm not suggesting for a moment that there's anything not true about this, that the application is not going, is not intended to provide for routine, daily, everyday uh, activity at the site, that it is solely a supplemental site. It's designed to provide a place for overthrow, for overflow and that we shouldn't expect that everything that might be allowed by uh, the, the specific language of the conditions. What happened on a daily basis uh, that, you know, underneath all of this, there's the reality of what's intended. And they, and the, the butters have properly said, well, this is all fine for Mr. Troyer to say and it's all fine for Mr. Wheatley to say, but in a while, Mr. Wheatley may change his mind. Somebody else may be in, in charge of the property or whatever. And then whatever they say now is just whatever they said now. And I would like to sort of stress that the ultimate guarantee that that won't lead to continuing this under radically different conditions where you maximize everything and suddenly it's an enterprise that's quite different from the enterprise that's been represented before us is our ability to return under our continuing jurisdiction to deal with that situation and to ask the applicant uh, to appear before us and, and to consider whether there are different or additional things that that need to be said, uh, that, 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 that need to be addressed in order to basically restore. in order to basically restore the situation that we think we're operating under now. I mean, we could go through and figure out numerical metrics for all of, for this sort of thing and come up with something as long as, as a mafia don's rap sheet, and it wouldn't really help us because there'd always be something else. Um, it comes to a point where you need to sort of decide whether something is sufficiently systematic that, that suddenly it's a new thing to deal with. And that's also the answer to, you know, maybe the police are coming on site and maybe they're not. Maybe you're getting responsiveness from ISD or not. But ultimately, if things get to a certain point, they can come back to us and we can, can maintain control over our own future with respect to this. Obviously, we're in a situation where uh, where there's an element of sort of the applicant having a lease on life uh, continuing something on into the future. Uh, but I just want to stress that we're not out of the picture once the special permit is granted, if it is, that the very first or the third actually of our conditions would be that we retain jurisdiction over the special permit grant. And as we, if we come to the conclusion that what is emerging is vastly different from what it is that we are being invited to approve, then we can address that at that time. Now, I know that Mr. Troyer or his successor will have something to say about what we do, and that's something we'll just have to deal with at the time. Uh, but at least neglect isn't necessarily the key that's important, that, that, I mean, we are sort of alerted to this situation now. I think there's generally a consensus as to where this ought to go in the future and that uh, and that if some of the underlying premises that we've been invited to accept turn out not to be true, then we have the ability to deal with them in, in a, uh, by reopening this proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Handlin. Um, I had a question from Mr. Wheatley um, in regards to, I'm assuming that to the trucks that will be accessing this site, is there any reason they would be coming from the bridge side and not from Mass Ave? Just thinking like all the stores are along Mass Ave or out Lowell Street. Um, does he anticipate that the vehicle, that his access would be coming from the Mass Ave side and not coming from the Pond side?
Oh, we could come from either side. I'm, I'm not fond of the Pond side. The Mass Ave is obviously much easier access, but it doesn't really matter.
If we were to, if we were to include within the conditions that the, the, for, that commercial access to the site is to be from Massachusetts Avenue, would that be acceptable to you?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handlin.
Um, one of the issues that we didn't mention, but that I'd like to focus on is weekend access. Um, I was something, I'm considerably moved actually. This is an unusual site, right? Lots of places weekend is when is time off and this, and this site is right next to a park and weekend is time on. And if there were restrictions about access on the weekend that the applicant could live with, I think that they would be a really good idea. Uh, you know, again, the the number of children present, I mean, there's a park right under that under bath. There's a bathroom right under that bath for elderly people who are staggering after relieving themselves. And it's important to, to, you know, to, to protect people there. And it's really different from many of the ordinary sites where weekends are sort of off, off times. And I'm wondering what we can do under, under those circumstances to be able, uh, to be able to control this. The, uh, so I'm just, I would like to put it to Mr. Troyer and the applicant as, as to what they think they need. Uh, but I do think that it's quite reasonable to, to be focused specifically on weekend access and recognize the special conditions that exist here uh, during the weekend.
Mr. Troyer, Mr. Wheatley, do you have a?
Um, all the, everything that we're writing down with all these six trips a day are really just numbers. So we have something on paper. I don't see us doing one, more than one trip or two trips a day, to be honest with you.
We just have. John, John, let me just stop you. Uh, basically the weekend access for them, they're focused on the weekend access, John. Uh, they're focused on.
I know, but what I'm saying is like, if I have somebody that wants to buy a snow blower on a, in the middle of a snowstorm and it's in that garage, I've got to be able to go down and get it on a Saturday.
But that's, yeah, and that's my point as well, guys, is uh, I mean, currently, Mr. Boyd has and can still uh, basically utilize it the way in which he has over the years. Um, and we haven't been precluded from it. If weekend access is a real concern, have a look back. Uh, have a look back and see if weekend access needs to be uh, needs to be adjusted or not. But at this point, he, he runs, are you open seven days a week, John?
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, yeah, we're open seven days a week.
Right, we have basically, we have given a lot and we really, this is a business, it's a commercial business that needs to have access to its storage space and it needs to have it. Uh, if you want to put specific hours on the weekends, fine, but we need to have access to this, to, to, to the store, um, unfortunately. Um, that's, that's kind of where we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handlin.
I'm wondering if we actually need, maybe this is, I, what has just been said is that, you know, you, you may have exceptional circumstances where you may need to access the site under, under weekend. Probably not six times a day. Probably you don't need to reserve the flexibility to do it six times a day. If maybe it was twice a day over the weekend, would accommodate the snow blower?
That's, and that's a great idea.
Okay, so where we said.
But who's monitoring this?
I think it's, the truth is, is that Mr. Sumater is going to be monitoring it for some time.
Yes, he definitely will be. But I mean, we're, we're, we're putting numbers down that like, who is possibly monitoring this?
So, so uh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Dempsey, that you're, you're, um, the public comment period is over. Um, I'm not allowed to, um, you need to be recognized in order to, to address the, the board. Um, and I, I do appreciate uh, Mr. Simmer's thumbs down. Um, so how this, so uh, I just wanted to close the loop quickly on the, the number of trips. Uh, so if we said not to exceed six trips per weekday and two trips per weekend day, that would, that would sort of close the loop on that one. Um, and then coming back to the question on enforcement, so with all of these, enforcement is tricky. Um, the that we will be asking, and I, I will need to talk to the board as to whether it should be a condition or not, um, that the applicant should keep a record of trips to the site so that we, or we have some data that they've prepared um, on their usage. It would be good if um, you know, there are, if there are others who are concerned that they, that they notice that it is being um, abused, that they definitely do need to bring it to the attention of um, not only the inspector of buildings, but they can bring it to uh, the attention of the board. Uh, and so that we can, we can take some action. Um, and, you know, we will, there will not be, you know, obviously there won't be, you know, a town car parked in front of the building with a spotter checking every single day to see what's going on. We're gonna have to sort of figure this out a little bit as we, as we go forward. Um, I think to a great extent, we're relying on the, the goodwill of the proposed owner, who is a.
That's ridiculous. That's completely ridiculous.
Pass it, please, please.
That's completely ridiculous to imagine that someone's gonna tell police. It's completely ridiculous.
Sir, I need you to, to not interject. Thank you. Um, but what I was saying is that it's a person who's known in the community, who has locate, who has a commercial business in the community and is someone who's able, who is visible and findable. Um, and so is, if there is issues, um, then this is, we have someone we can talk to, who we can address these problems to. Um, if, you know, and those conversations will happen at the town level. It's the, the inspector of buildings is the zoning enforcement officer. It's their responsibility to um, to enforce the um, the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but it's also up to the zoning board of appeals to reopen the hearing if, if the permit that has been issued is being abused. Um, and to, to revisit the terms of the, of the application and that the, the board has the ability to not only change the terms, but the board has the ability to withdraw the permit. So there are enforcement mechanisms in place. The question, um, it's the day-to-day enforcement that is um, something that is gonna, we're gonna have to rely on the town to, to do that, to, to do that enforcement and to take the, when there are complaints, to take those complaints seriously and to uh, address those to the applicant and to the board. That's the, the way that any other, the other action in town is enforced, is it's up to the, the, when the redevelopment board sets up, makes a decision, it's up to the town to enforce what the redevelopment board has put forward. When um, you know, the historic districts commission or the, the historical commission, it's up to the town to enforce those decisions. Um, and if members of the community feel that, that the enforcement is not being done, it's, you know, there are com, you know, issue a complaint, raise a complaint directly to the, to, you know, whomever is the, is the appropriate body and to let them know that you're, you feel that, that there's a town bylaw or a town decision that's not being enforced and it's something that needs to be discussed, um, and that a remedy needs to be found. Um, and I, I, I don't think I'm being unreasonable in stating that I, I think that um, you know, we need to, whatever decision we reach, we need to have some good faith and give it a try to see and make sure that things are going. We need to keep some extra, extra eyes on it at the start to confirm. Um, and if there are issues, then we need to get them addressed as quickly as possible. But um, that's the, that's the mechanism under, as I understand it, under state and town law for how um, these kinds of enforcements of uh, of decisions need to take place. Um, and appropriate action will be taken by the town. Uh, other questions or comments from the board? Do not see anything. Are there any other questions that members of the board have for the applicant before we vote to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handlin.
Wonder if, at this point, I've, we've talked a little bit about some additional conditions. Yeah, since we last summarized them all, and I wonder if you could review what it is that we think we certainly, we currently have on the table and make sure that everybody is agreeing. Making sure we know where everybody is on that.
Okay. So there were thirteen conditions that we were discussing uh, that the board had forward. The first is that commercial activities are limited to the hours noted in the town's noise abatement bylaw, which is Title V, Section twelve, uh, Article twelve, Section three A. Um, those hours are eight to six P M. Monday through, eight A M. to six P M. Monday through Friday, nine A M. to five P M. Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. Um, condition number two, it's the size of the vehicles accessing the site in connection with a commercial use are limited to the Department of Transportation Class one through three, which is up to fourteen thousand pounds gross vehicle weight. All loading must take place on-site. Loading of vehicles on the street is prohibited. Um, number three, the activities that may take place in the site are limited to the following. Storage of goods for sale at RW Shattuck and Company, Inc., RW Shattuck. Uh, storage of vehicles owned by the owner of the property in RW Shattuck, minor service of vehicles owned by the owner of the property RW Shattuck, and general office functions. Any additional commercial activities will require an amendment of this special permit. Nothing herein shall preclude the accessory garage building on the property to also be used for any residential storage purpose permitted within the R two zoning district customarily associated with residential use. Number four, the storage of materials is limited to those allowed under the storage use group in the state building codes, seven eighty C M R three eleven, with the exception of aircraft hangar, dry boat storage, self-service storage, public parking, and any items which are not offered for sale at RW Shattuck. Uh, number five, no retail sales, retail deliveries or retail transfers may take place on the property. Uh, number six, um, and number five, we were talking about amending it to, to include a second line, which would state that access to the site, a commercial access to the site shall be from the Massachusetts Avenue direction. Um, and then number six was that the signage shall be limited to that allowed in the residential sign district in the zoning bylaw. Number seven, at no time shall more than four people be employed at this location. Uh, number eight, the number of vehicle trips in connection with the commercial use of the property is not to exceed six trips per weekday and two trips per weekend day. Um, number nine, uh, the decision shall be recorded in the Middlesex County Registry of Deeds within sixty days after certification of no appeal, and a true photocopy of said recording shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Failure to do so shall render this special permit null and void. Upon recording with the registry of this special permit, excuse me, upon recording with the registry of this special permit, the special permit supersedes all previous grants. Uh, number ten, once the property is sold to John L. Wheatley and Karen Wheatley, and once enacted, this special permit shall be in effect until the property is transferred or sold to another entity. The accessory building is rented to another entity, or should the accessory building become uninhabitable. Notwithstanding the above, Mr. and Mrs. Wheatley may seek to amend the special permit in the event of a sale of property or rental of the accessory building pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and the Town of Arlington zoning bylaws as they exist at that time. Number eleven, complaints regarding the operation of the property are to be submitted to the building inspector per Section three point one in the zoning bylaw. If in the inspector's opinion, the conditions of the permit are not being followed, this permit may be reviewed, revised or revoked by the board. Number twelve, uh, the building inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time they determine that violations are present. The building inspector shall proceed under Section three point one of the zoning bylaw under the provisions of Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D of the Massachusetts General Laws and Institute Non-Criminal Complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with Section three point one. Number thirteen, this board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. And those are the thirteen conditions as they stand at the moment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handlin.
I'm sort of hoping that, I'm hoping that thirteen is a lucky rather than unlucky number. On condition number one, uh, as I was listening, I thought that, that the chairman added something that was in a previous draft from Mr. Troyer uh, that recited what the hours of operation uh, are under the noise bylaw.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just added those for general reference. Those were not included in the condition.
I see. Well, those should not be in the condition because of course that, that bylaw can change and whatever the bylaw is, is what it is.
Is there any further information members of the board need from this applicant before we close the hearing?
May I make one request?
Mr. Troyer.
As you know, we uh, we are in a P and S agreement uh, and vision on this. Is there any possible chance to get a straw poll uh, before we close the public hearing? To grant with conditions?
Um, yes, I could ask if there are any members of the board who have a strong objection to the application given the conditions that have been proposed.
Fair enough. As you can tell, but the only concern is if it's denied, I, I run into the rule sixteen issue of two years and I have to come back with a substantially different uh, avenue. So this property is for sale. That's, that's my concern. I'm looking to protect my client. So.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Trying to get a sense.
Yeah. Um, I did not hear a response to that question I had. Um, so with that, um, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close. I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing for docket three eight two two twenty pond lane. Have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So, uh, once the board closes the hearing, the board can't take any more testimony, um, at the following hearing, which will take place two weeks from today. So the twenty seven, twenty seventh, the board will make a final vote on a final written decision. Um, Mr. Hanlon, uh, will you, uh, are you prepared to oversee the preparation of a decision in favor of approval with conditions?
I am, yes.
Right, thank you. Um, so then with that, we'll do a roll call vote of the board to close the public hearing for twenty pond lane. Uh, Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Uh, so we are closed, um, on twenty pond lane. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon?
Can I just, I just want, just so that everybody understands, when the chair said earlier that once we close the public hearing, we can't take additional testimony, we actually can't take additional information in any way. So letters, emails, all of it. Well, we're now, we're now on our own. We've been shot to the moon and whether we get there depends upon, upon fate and whether I have enough time to get the opinion written.
You have plenty of co-authors available.
The board knows that I use them.
So with that, going back to our agenda, uh, this brings us to item number seven on our agenda with the docket three eight, three, six, one oh three Thorndike Street. Um, this is an application that we had opened, um, I can't remember if it was a five weeks or seven weeks ago, um, and the applicant, that's board had requested some time because it had wanted to confer with counsel on a couple of questions. Um, and we had a couple of recommendations for the applicant and so, uh, turn to, uh, attorney Alvin to tell us what they, what they have done in the meantime.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Christopher Alvin for the record. Uh, with me is Alan and Andy, who are the architect, engineer, and applicant for the project. What we had discussed at the last meeting, um, I'll just go through the list. There was a question that we should be added, uh, adding a vegetated buffer, uh, to comply with section six, one, ten, A, so that there'd be a buffer between the driveway and the abutting property. Um, we were asked to update our calculations of landscape and open space area calculations, uh, our, and our architect, we did those calculations, and it turns out that we do comply with those regulations and we can review those on the plan in just a moment. Um, there was a question about revising the design of the windows on the east side, and we did do that. We made some revisions to, to the windows and how they're set up. There was also a question about the top floor compliance, uh, as far as the building code goes. Our architect and engineer confirmed that we met the building code and they'll, they'll speak to that. And there was also a question, just I think in, um, just out of curiosity about how the FEMA regulations affect us and I believe our, uh, architect or engineers on, um, on the line to discuss that. So, um, before we jump into the criteria for variance, I'd like to turn it over by sharing my screen to go over the revised plans, but if Alan or Andy are available, they can speak to it. So, um, Alan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, um, Chairman and Board. Um, so my name is Alan. I'm the, uh, the architect and also one of the owners for the property. Um, so we had, uh, spent some time updating, um, the open space, um, new design. Uh, Chris, if you just go back to that diagram down there. So what we did is, you know, we were able to shift the, the main entry for the front unit, um, to the right side and in the app, as a result, we were able to provide another twenty by twenty open space, you know, open usable space. And, uh, together, can you combine together with the, the winding rear and we are currently, um, meeting the thirty percent, um, uh, you know, requirement, um, and, um, and also our landscape, open space also, you know, fulfill the, um, the requirement. And, and as, um, you know, Chris mentioned, we were able to putting us a very small, um, buffer zone between, um, the, um, the driveway and our neighbor. Um, so we have a, a resident narrow driveway was ten feet. Now we're kind of getting out of foot. Um, I think, uh, the oriented by law requires the, the park, the, the car park to be non-narrower than eight foot six. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, we also have, um, uh, been discussing that, you know, we can also do a green fence in a way that it provides privacy and also, um, you know, the greenish, um, view. Um, so, uh, we hope that helps. Um, and, um, and Chris, if you go to the, um, um, the east elevation, I can talk a little bit about that. Um, so on east, uh, so in our last, um, hearing, there were, so there were some concerns about the, uh, the kind of random, um, modern placement of windows and of different shapes and, 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 and heights. So we, uh, we, we spent some time and took some effort, uh, looking all, all them together and trying to make them all similar size and, um, and a better alignment. Um, so, um, I think, you know, as a result, it's, you know, it looks much better in a way that it's, you know, they're all lining and it's only, uh, uh, two ones offset. Those are the, you know, uh, vertically, those are the ones for staircases. We want to provide, um, you know, ambient lines for the, uh, staircases. Um, so we, uh, we also updated our civil plan as well, um, with all the, the numbers and, um, the table with all the calculations.
I actually think that the architecturals do a, a better job of describing the, um, updated table as far as dimensional requirements go.
Yeah, I, I believe there were two other questions. One is regarding the, uh, half level on the attic, you know, in, in general, I think we have, um, so that being, you know, there are, uh, a variance about our heights. So, um, apologies for not being, being able to attending our, our last hearing. So, um, we are, um, so the existing house in a, in a flood zone, you know, during the conservation, um, hearings, we, we had to follow, you know, FEMA regulations, you know, federally, um. So our flood plan, I believe, is at seven feet and we, we have to, uh, follow FEMA regulations to set our first level floor plan at eight foot, I believe. This is one foot higher than the flood plan elevation. Um, um, on the, um, um, so the, which now, um, we are above four for six, um, you know, our first forever elevations above four for six, um, uh, compared to the average, you know, grade, you, because our, our size slopes towards the back. So that, and, and, you know, and that which qualify our basement as a one level. So tech, you know, per.
Because, because of the definition of basement.
Because of definition of the basement and level. So I do want to mention a little bit because, you know, according to I B C and R C, actually, the definition for story is six foot above average grade. Um, and, and most towns actually, uh, follows that definition about six foot and Arlington is one of the few towns that kind of have a strict, uh, more strict, uh, new definition for the floor. Um, and, um, uh, you know, it's, it's, we, uh, in order to provide a, 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 a design that follows the national, you know, regulation, we can have to set our elevation higher. Um, so we, we want, you know, we want to argue that is a hard, you know, the hardship. Um, and, um, I believe the other question regarding the, the level is the half level at attic. Um, so initially, um, we had, um, so Chris, if you go to, uh, I do have a diagram showing um, the, uh, the attic section, if you could go, I believe it's on the third page, um, uh, go up one, I believe, go up, um, few. Um, one more.
This one.
Uh, no, Chris, I think it's the third page overall. So you, you, if you kept going backward, yes, here. So, um, so, um, so Arlington by law requires, uh, two pitch roof, um, um, and, uh, and overall, I believe it's forty percent of the square footage for the attic, uh, comparing to the second level. So, um, we, we had achieved this, you know, we, we, we have been fortunate to work a few projects in Arlington. I, 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 I think the board actually had approved this approach, uh, uh, probably two years ago for a project on Falmouth Street and we would, uh, we kind of, um, use this approach also on thirty, um, uh, to, uh, Harrison Street as well. So we basically had a, have a, a major structure kind of banded and have the installation on top of it. Um, in that case, we, we still, um, um, meet the two pitch roof and, uh, while providing, um, uh, forty percent of, of the, uh, square footage of the, you know, compared to the second level. Um, so of course, if you don't mind screwing down a little bit, um, you know, so we're showing that the blue is, uh, what the square footage is being counted, you know, um, on the second level and, uh, the, in the attic, the, the, the red zone, the hatch zone is, um, forty percent, which is below, uh, six, ten, um, um, you know, uh, the habitable height. So we do believe that we actually meet the, uh, uh, zoning bylaw in, in, in order to meet the half story definition for the attic.
And does the, does the attic section have sufficient, um, insulation to meet the?
Yes, correct. So we can, so we will, uh, so in, in, uh, in, in a field, actually, we are, we, we, we're still, um, we are able to do spray foams uh, below, uh, the structure as you see, um, uh, I don't know if I can annotate here, um, let me see here. So we are still be able to, uh, spray foam the, oh, sorry, Chris. Apologies, um. So we're still able to, to, uh, spray from down here. And we just need a brief, to, to build a structure, uh, you know, a substructure above it, you know, we can put additional, um, you know, rigid foams on top and, and support a two pitch roof down that way. So this line shows the, um, the sixth hand setting height. And so we are, if I, if I may draw the intersection, so this zone are being counted, um, towards A F R calculation, um, and also square footage. And both sides aside, lower than six ten and still be able to provide, um, a space for, um, you know, you know, bathroom and storage spaces. Um.
That was very impressive. I did not know you could do that on Zoom. I was going to draw that you, uh, I'm impressed. Uh, so just, just to go back, so the board understands the, the request that we're asking for. Um, it number one, it's a special permit because we're reconstructing a pre-existing non-conforming structure. But because in the reconstruction, we are creating two non-conformities that currently do not exist, we need two variances. And the one variance is we were just talking about is that we need a variance for stories because two point five stories are permitted and we have three point five stories under the, uh, uh, under, under the definition of the by law because we're in the FEMA, uh, area. Um, again, we meet the height requirement, but we don't meet the story requirement. Um, and then the second variance we need is that we're exceeding the minimum lot coverage of thirty five feet. Well, we provide fifty six point four percent. Um, and I know the board was asking, you know, how can you ever get a variance and the strict requirements of the variance, which is true. I just look at this as a unique situation where a couple of things are happening. Number one, we are eliminating existing non-conformities. So right now, as the structure exists, what legally exists is a structure that does not meet, um, side setbacks. And we could certainly move ahead with the structure that has the same footprint and have, and, and carry on that non-conformity. But what we are proposing is to eliminate that non-conformity of the setback and we'll never be able to get it back if this decision is granted. And we're creating a new non-conformity with, with, with the lock coverage, but we are eliminating the existing non-conformities. And I think the other sort of unique situation, other than being in the FEMA and, and being in the flood zone, I think the other unique situation about this property is that when you're talking about lock coverage, you're talking about density. You're talking about you want to, uh, maintain and, and not create overcrowding in a neighborhood. But this property, um, is, is unique because it's at a corner where it only has one house that it butts, and then there's open space, uh, to, to the other side of it and behind it. And the only property that it butts, that's where we're actually extending the setback. So we're actually moving this setback back a little bit. So we're sort of, uh, decreasing the uh, overcrowding in which I think the lock coverage by law is intended to protect.
Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, just, just for general, um, knowledge, I know that when we talk about usable open space, it's typically that open space has to have twenty five feet on a side, um, in order to count as usable open space. The zoning by law does include a, an exception that it can be twenty feet on a side as long as it's, it's a new development and it has, uh, parking at grade. And so that is why, uh, the front yard and rear yard, um, although the setbacks are twenty feet, it does count as usable open space. So just in case there was some confusion over that point, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so one of the questions we had had, um, we had talked to counsel about was sort of the, just how the conservation code and the zoning by law, how they intersect. Um, and if, and also with the, with the FEMA code, is there anything that the board needs to consider differently because of uh, those conditions and, um, apart from them being, uh, if the board finds that it can consider them as a part of the various criteria related to soil shape and topography, um, they enter into the equation. Otherwise, um, they're, they don't change the way that the board should be, uh, reviewing and considering the, uh, the variances for the property.
And what was counsel's response? That's a, that's a high level question. So I'm interested in how they've responded to that. I'm sure their answer was, there is no answer. Uh, or, and/or it depends.
Well, you know, certainly, right. So basically the, like the zoning board can't create a zoning decision and supersede the decision of another board. We don't have that.
Sure.
Zoning doesn't have that authority. Um, and so whatever we do, um, we need to do it with, um, you know, with that in mind, that uh, your art, artists, our decisions don't supersede other, other decisions, um, by other boards. So that if the board, if the board was to make a recommendate, you know, was to find and it had different, you know, different criteria than has already been worked out with the conservation commission, obviously the conservation commission would need to revisit and decide if they need to adjust their, their, uh, their parameters or whatnot.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Just to point to the, the, the conservation commission has its own criteria to apply and so do we. It's perfectly possible for them to be totally right on the conditions they apply. And nevertheless, that doesn't preclude us from coming to a decision that functionally is different because we're applying different rules. Um, and so I'm not saying that that's actually happening here. But the question we have to decide is whether, you know, on this particular thing, the question on a variance, we have to decide is whether, uh, a reasonable hardship is due to, uh, we'll say soil conditions because I think the others are not, are, are not applicable. Um, and that's a question that in and of itself, the conservation commission doesn't address and doesn't answer. Uh, that being said, we would do everything we can to avoid creating unnecessary, you know, uh, unnecessary disagreements with another commission. Uh, and so, you know, to some extent, this is an artificial construct, but it's certainly possible for us to have a different view as to what, uh, to what soil conditions meant for purposes of state law. Uh, and I'm not at all suggesting that we should or could or would in this kid situation do that, but it's a possibility. It's not that we are foreclosed by the decision of the conference conservation commission from doing that.
For, for the record, no, no disagreement with the, with the board's comments. He is correct.
Thank you. Uh, before we move on to the, the applicant's, um, uh, presentation regards to, uh, proposed variance criteria, um, just wanted to ask the board if they had any questions or comments in regards to, um, the, the drawing set or the, in the actual building, um, before we move on to the next section.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I have a series of questions about the way in which, about the way in which this fits into the neighborhood. I mean, I'd like, like to understand a little better how the lot size here or the shape of the lot is different or the same as other ones in the neighborhood and if the applicant has. As other ones in the neighborhood, and if the applicant has information about lot size or. Furniture, the things of that nature that would give us a sense of. How unique this property is. Um, that would be useful, and I'm not sure whether this is the occasion to. Those are obviously relevant to some of the considerations under the. Under the uh, under section ten, and then and I'm just. Uh, but. I leave it up to you, the chairman, whether this is the time to ask those questions or whether they. Uh, they should be reserved for later.
Well, I definitely think that that's something that's probably going to be raised in the. Discussion of uh possible variance criteria, because I believe that was one of the. Things that was in the um. One of the criteria that was specifically in the letter presented by the attorney, so. Unless there's anything else the board, I would ask attorney often if he wants to go ahead and. Discuss the criteria for a variance.
Sure, and uh, and a fair comment by the board member, this is the G I S map that I was able to just pull up. Um, and I think. One of it, and I'll go through it in order, but one of the. Um. You know, sort of unique things about this property is that there's just two structures here. Uh, and I know location isn't necessarily something, but you know, I think the board can consider. Um, everything, um, it's surrounded and. By by street, by and by uh recreational fields, and I think that that's sort of unique. Opposed the other the other lots that are. Like everything else in Arlington in a in a grid pattern next to a lot of other structures, so I think that's something that the board consider. Uh, but going through. The criteria for a variance, um. We've sort of talked about that. Uh, as far as the literal enforcement of the provisions, we would be have very difficult time meeting the story. Re- uh, requirements because of the FEMA regulations and about and how the the definition of basement is defined in the bylaw. Um, and again, the removal of the existing dwelling and then the construction of the new dwelling, new building will actually eliminate. Front inside side uh nonconformities, I think that that's part. Of the board's consideration. Um, and that a grant of a variance in this circumstance would forever eliminate existing setback nonconformities. Um, and as the Supreme Court, judicial court has always made clear, it's ultimate objective by zoning to eliminate. Nonconformities in most cases, and that's what we're doing here. Uh, have it that we are creating other additional nonconformities. We think that the other nonconformities are less detrimental. Um, uh, the existing. Dwelling is dilapidated, it's in bad condition, and it would be very difficult and uneconomic to just re renovate what's existing there. Uh, and without a right to reconstruct a a project of this size, it would be a substantial hardship placed on the petitioner. Um, and I think that with a little uh literal enforcement of the bylaw, the petitioner would be left with a nonconforming dwelling, which size and condition. Are not harmonized with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project will improve the property and provide a benefit to the neighborhood. As far as the hardship goes, it is, again, I think it's. A unique sort of shape, there might be a disagreement here, but it is in a in a sort of a unique. Um, situation where it's a small um narrow lot, even though it's like all the other properties. Because it's next to a lot of open space, I think that that's part of the consideration. In addition, it's in the flood zone, uh, and because of the unique soils, we have to meet FEMA regulations. Uh, and that is especially true when we're talking about the story variance that we're looking at. Um, and and again, um, it is a sort of a unique's. Location of where it is. Um, given the shape of the property, that it would be very difficult to reconstruct this structure. Uh, eliminate some existing nonconformities. Without creating another nonconformity, and that's what what happened here, and I think that that. Goes again to uh whether we are. Falling through with the intent and purpose of the bylaws, I was speaking of before, I think the purpose of the coverage. Bylaw is to eliminate overcrowding. And I think we're eliminating setback requirements, and we're creating a project. That fits and um. As far as we know, we have not heard any opposition from many neighbors.
Thank you for that, um. So the. Do you, buddy, just have the? The flood map?
Uh, I might be.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was submitted, it's not required, I was just curious if you had it.
Oh, I could put this up.
Test our town G I S here.
Yeah, right, that's. That's what everybody uses, so.
Okay, yeah. So it's not in the regulated floodway. Uh, but it is within the one percent, um. So the the hundred years, the quote unquote hundred year storm area. Um, in that neighborhood.
Um, and Alan, can you speak to the condition of the structure? Is is the structure in good shape where it would be? Easy to renovate, or is it in bad shape where? Um, you know. It really needs to be reconstructed.
So, yeah, so, um, yeah, I'm happy to do that, so, um, uh, and and Andy can actually, uh, uh, the speak to this a little more, but. So when we purchased the the, I mean, the house, you know, one very noticeable, uh, I'm sure many neighbors seen that a house already tuning, uh, it's it's, um. The house is actually falling, the foundation has serious, um, um. Uh, but damages, um, and and and, uh, what I think the entire uh foundation wall is cracked and and sunken. So the house is actually tuning towards the field side, so and in order actually to reconstruct this, we can't actually just simply reconstruct this, fix it up or reconstruct it. We had to use special foundation tactics and and putting the. Um, the to drill down to um pretty deep, you know, to actually support new structure. So this house, um, is, um, definitely is not in a good shape, um, that I, we don't. Uh, uh, even think there's a way to fix it up structurally. Um, Andy, please, you know, you know, he's the structural engineer, he can talk more about this.
Hi, everyone. My name's Andy Chan, I'm the structural engineer on this project. Um, we did a geotechnical report, the soil condition is really bad. And the geotechnical engineer suggests us to use a deep helical piles. But for this type of construction and. It's really. Impossible to repair the house while we're still doing the helical piles. And there are multiple cracks on the wall. Um, it it just impossible to fix the wall. We have to, we have to just rebuild the foundation.
So, um. One of, so the the two variances being requested, one has to do with the height, which, um, which was.
With the store, with the store.
Stories, correct, the number of stories, which was is due to the. The size underneath, um, the other has to do with the the maximum lot coverage. And so. I want to ask if you could sort of talk a little bit about. What it was that led? To that. Um, to not being able to stay within the thirty five percent.
Um, I don't know if Alan can speak to that, but I think in order to reconstruct this. Project and redo it on this lot. It would be hard to do something that had less lot coverage that would be economic.
Yes, I can talk a bit more about this, so, um, we have, um, as everyone see the 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 plan, we have a relatively a very tight site to work with. So, um, uh, we are, yeah, it's a a number it looks is, uh, we are over by a lot, actually square footage wise, we're not. Um, and you know, uh, one downside, you know, working with a very tight side is we do do don't have a lot of real estate to, you know. To put a driveway in there, so what we have been discussing is, you know, it helps with the zoning. Um, decisions, you know, we are happy to provide, uh, you know, purpose papers for the driveway. Uh, to the, you know, along, you know, the along the building, um, site. Which will help the, uh, you know, water everything, um, um, so. Um. That's just what we had to work with. Um. We can potentially reduce a little bit, um, uh, um, but just not much, we've we we figure, you know, we cannot intend to provide a better design. For for a neighborhood than trying to really make everything super, super tight, like I said, I can, we can probably make the driveway another foot narrower, but which we don't really want to do that.
A- a- and to to, again, I hate to keep reiterating what I'm. What I'm saying is technically we would not need a variance if we shifted the house. Um, closer to the neighboring property. Um, and that because we wouldn't be creating a new nonconformity or creating a worse nonconformity, it would still be under the. Guise of a special permit. Um, having said that, we think that this project in this location, this size is better than what the nonconforming structure currently is.
So you're saying that if you had kept the existing side yard nonconformity, you wouldn't. Need to cover more than thirty five percent of the site?
Well, yeah, well, then that would be that variance could still exist, correct. What I'm saying is if we didn't move back. You know, if we 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 could have. Proposed a project that provided. Um, yeah, six feet or whatever the existing setback is. And not not needed a variance for that, but we decided to meet the setback requirements.
Okay. No, understood. Other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Mister Chair.
Mister LeBlanc.
Uh, one question that I have is just related to the top we were just talking about, um. Has there been any type of survey of the rest of the neighborhood to see? Generally what the lot coverage area is of the surrounding neighborhood to see. Is this property just really out of whack in terms of lot coverage, or does this just happen to be what the lot coverage generally is in the neighborhood? Um, I think that just might go a little bit in terms of. How much this proposed property is fitting in with the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, I think it's a hundred percent accurate. If you look at the neighborhood, that many of these houses don't meet the minimum. Lot coverage requirements. In this neighborhood. They're much larger and they are exceeding the population. If you look at just the assessor's map here. This is not official of what they're showing, but you can see that much of the structures are taking over a big portion of the property lot. Properties.
Thank you, Mister LeBlanc. And you, anyone else on the board?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Hanlon.
Um, for those of us who are not necessarily that visual, um. I guess it would be nice to know. Uh, without relying just on glancing at a G I S map. Uh, what proportion of the nearby houses are in fact. Occupying more, I. If that information isn't readily available, we'll just have to deal with it the way it is. I I noticed that on the other side of the street going up to the right, houses are quite large compared to the lot. Um, larger than they are in this corner. But it's quite a mix here, because this is not a homogeneous neighborhood. For example, you wouldn't say the same thing about the lock thread across the street, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is I don't think that that kind of information is readily available, and you would have to do a survey and. Um, you know, I think I think the bigger question is. Is this structure what we're proposing a lot like? Size. Um, and look. As many of the structures in the immediate neighborhood, I think is the question.
Well, that that's one question, but I wonder. What I'm struggling with is the first criterion that we have is say whether or not. Uh, the hardship here is due to the shape of the lot. And whether the shape of the lot in this has to be within. Uh. Has to be, uh. Uh. Out of whack with what's. True in the general neighborhood, in other words, if if every lot is narrow, then it doesn't count. And I'm trying to figure out how to apply that. Uh, and I guess really what I'm interested in in the first place, unless there's something else about the lot. That I'm missing. But as I understand it, in the terms of the soil shape and. And uh, topological conditions. What you're offering to us is that. The shape. Is. Abnormally constricted. And that that is driving the decision or making it necessary, making it an unreasonable hardship. If you can't do what you're doing, because the shape makes it impossible to do the things that would comply with the bylaw. And it looks to me, I mean, there's a lot of variation, but it looks to me like the frontage is not that different from house to house. Some. But I don't see any, if you were just looking at this map and saying, well, is there anything unusual about this property that has to do with how narrow the lot is? I don't know that you would easily be able to say that there is. That wasn't stated in the form of a question, but of course it was a question.
Yeah, no, I mean, uh, again, I think that there's there's two things that need to be considered now. Wh- when you're talking about grants of variances, getting appealed to the land court, and then the land court. Reviewing the variance and seeing if there's. Unique circumstances, yes, it's it's a very difficult burden. Uh, but if if every. Um, if every city in town said that there needs to be. A soil condition. And I need to see unique shape because the size, then there would never be a variance ever granted anywhere in the Commonwealth. Um, and I think that considerations. Here are very unique. Related again to the to the the soil conditions of being in a flood district, that's number one. Uh, number two, it being a corner lot. Where it's next to a lot of recreational area. Uh, number three, it is may not be. Uh, the same shape. Uh, it may be alike, the same shape as a lot of the properties. In the district, but it is actually a narrow shape when you look at it by itself, and it is sort of sitting there by itself, it's sitting there by itself. A budding recreational land. And again, I do think that the board is permitted. To consider the fact that our proposal. Is eliminating existing nonconformities, so, um, I think. Reviewing that in a. Uh, in conjunction with each other. I think that we can certainly meet the legal standard for variance now. Somebody was to challenge it. Um, you know, who who knows, but variances are often. Uh, granted for much, much less reasons than what we're proposing here tonight.
Not so much here, though, we're pretty uptight about things like this, I. I think that you're quite right, quite correct that on some of the criteria of the state law. Like, for example, uh, compatibility with the neighborhood. The fact that it's located on a little island in the middle of a park is certainly going to influence that decision. And when you're looking at the fourth criterion, the way we count them. Uh, about being consistently with the pi- the policy of the bylaw, the fact that you are eliminating one. Nonconformity certainly counts in your favor in that. But, you know, these things don't leak over from category to category, the scores have said that you have to have to meet all four. And I'm not sure that the fact that you're in the middle of a park. Influences the question about whether or not. An unusual constriction in the in the width of the property is the reason why. You, uh, why you need relief from the lock coverage. I will say this, that I feel much more comfortable on this score. I feel much more comfortable with. The. The, uh. Hide and story. Uh, I do feel that there's a pretty good case here that you're talking about soil conditions in a way that that we should be taking into account, and that. If we didn't, we would be sort of interfering with. Important resiliency matters that that in a in an area like this needs to be taken into account. But I am, I am having a trouble with squaring. The. Uh, lot coverage. With the way in which we normally have applied. The state law in that.
And I do want to add a comment if I may, it's.
This is to you.
Um, so Mrs. Uh, yes, Mrs. Allen, so it's, I think it's, you know, our hardship, um, you know, from an architect standpoint, it's it's really everything combined. If you look at. Um, the conditions, you know, you know, you know, individually, it may not look, uh, it's a big hardship, but with. Um, you know, with the condition of the soil, with the attack attack site and the existing structure conditions as well. Um, and also flood plan, and it's actually fairly slope site towards the uh, the 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 long direction. So everything combined together, um, it's kind of really prevent. So everything combined together, um, it's kind of really prevent us, um, to propose and, and, and renovation fix up or even addition like, um, like Chris, you know, mentioned, that we could hold our existing footprint and, and actually expand back. So those the, um, conditions all combined kind of form, uh, you know, uh, the hardship that we see, it kind of made us, you know, to, you know, it, it kind of lead us to have to make those decisions. We have to really, you know, take our setback, you know, as our boundary and try to create a meaningful development to, to provide a meaningful, you know, structure. So that's, you know, uh, I just want to add those comments and, and thank you so much for, um, you know, uh, for your.
Thank you, Mr. Yip.
A- a- and to reiterate, to highlight, what Alan is saying is that it's, it's a, it's about the topography and it's about the soil conditions. Those are two things that he's pointing out that the existing structure can't maintain because of the soil conditions, because of the unique topography. This is the design of the project and those, that's if, if, if the board, although I will still argue that because of the unique location of the property and because it's a corner lot could still be considered, if the board is reading the black and white letter of the law, then we will stand on the topography and the soil conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, was that, wasn't sure if that was Mr. Hanlon or Mr. DuPont?
Both, I think. But I was going to ask, I mean, that's a quick follow-up to that. I was asking, well, on topography, could you just explain what it is you mean by the topography? Is that the slope that, that Alan just referred to, or is there something else that we should be taking into consideration?
I think that's the slope that Alan was talking about. Yeah.
Yes, the size, uh, slows, uh, slopes towards the, the rare. Um, and, um, and also, um, the conservation, um, we actually, actually shrunk our basement comparing to what, what was there a little bit, trying to mitigate the flood. Uh, so we're not able to, uh, as a regular house, have a basement. Um, and, uh, we had a, as Andy mentioned, we had to use medical pipes. So those, all those difficulties are at, not just limiting, um, um, you know, not just adding on cost, also limiting our overall square footage. Um, so and you know, um, that's why we're, you know, there, there are a lot of decisions made for, and you know, um, as a result of those, you know, hardships as we, um, see it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DuPont.
So, um, when I was looking over the materials, I mean, this seemed to me to be more an argument along the line of soil condition and I have been following the conversation. So I do understand that there are things that are being said about the shape of the lot, the location of the lot and all, all of that. Um, but I still am not sure that I am hearing anything about soil condition, lot shape, topography uh, that make this lot unique. Um, and you know, that in the section ten of the variance statute, you know, i- it does say that it affects the lot, uh, or the land especially, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. And so I, I suspect, uh, that all of these things that we've been talking about, if it's within the one hundred year storm area, all that probably applies to all of the lots surrounding it. And so I have not yet heard anything that makes me think that this qualifies in that first part of the statute where you've got a condition that affects this lot and not the others in the district. Um, beyond that, and this, I understand that generally speaking, you know, maximizing the size of the property for the purposes of making it economically uh, desirable. I perfectly understand that and appreciate that. But I also think that there's something, you know, that that we're not hearing because if somebody comes to me and says we've got to do this in order to make a reasonable profit. I think that, that if we were at that point, um, you know, if we pass the first part about lot shape, soil condition or topography, and we are getting to the uneconomic part of it, I would want to know exactly facts and figures in terms of, well, what do you have to spend and how much are you going to make? And that seems to me to be a rather general statement to say, well, it's not economical. And I do believe that it was, uh, the chair in the last meeting who asked about the possibility of building this on a smaller scale and still having it work in terms of the investment. And I don't think that we ever got an answer to that. But if the answer to that is, yeah, it can be done, it's just not as large, it's not maximizing profit, but it's at least making it economically viable. Then I think that we should not necessarily be considering the expansion in terms of lot coverage. I do take Mr. uh, Hanlon's point about the stories because that may be more related to soil condition. But again, I still think that this soil condition is generally affecting the other property in the district. So I just haven't heard anything yet that makes me think that it meets the first, uh, set of criteria.
Thank you, Mr. DuPont.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Um. I think, uh, just to go for one of Mr. DuPont's points, I think there is potentially something going on with this site, with the soils that may not be affecting the other sites. And that has to do with the reports of the building, uh, sinking and leaning. If there, if that was a prevalent thing throughout the area, I think we would, there would be some evidence of that, um, with more people reconstructing homes or doing major innovations to do that. So maybe there is something in this specific lot with the soil that is causing some foundation issue that's, that, um, is unique to this. But I think to, to my other, I guess, comment here is I'm not necessarily getting the connection between the site, the soil, the topography that's causing the property to, or this potential design to be at the lot coverage that it is. I don't see that connection, uh, or haven't heard an argument for what that connection is outside of, um, what Mr. DuPont was sort of getting at is this is what it needs to be to be economical. I don't, that's not a connection to the, the soils or the, or the topography or anything like that that I've heard so far.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Other comments from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, so I just went quickly to the GIS map that we've all been looking at. Um, and I guess I could look for confirmation whether these figures are right, but it indicates that this property was bought late last year and that the sale price was six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, which is somewhat below the assessed value of eight hundred and three thousand, four hundred dollars. And so I guess what we're looking at unreasonable hardships here and, and not how far below the expectation of the engineer and the owner uh, that this is. Uh, and presumably the parcel was purchased knowing that that you had to go through this process and this process doesn't necessarily lead to uh, variance is being granted all day, every day. Um, I guess I, if, if you were going to make, if you were going to make to a court instead of us poor volunteer citizens, a case for why it is that you couldn't somehow make a reasonable profit under those circumstances, then I, I'd invite you to make it because it, the numbers and the other things that the other board members have been pointing out don't suggest, are not strongly indicative of unreasonable hardship.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Um. There's nothing further from the board.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Please proceed. Yep.
Oh, Mr. Hoffman, please, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to ask if there was any more comments from the board or from the, from the public before I made my next statement.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do need to, uh, get public comments. I was gonna, I was moving on to that. Um, so note that public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand. Should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of public wish to speak can digitally raise their hand, using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine. It indicates you'd like to speak. Be called upon by the chair, ask for full name and address the record and given time for questions and comments. Um, are there members of the public who wish to address this application? Uh, we have Steve Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Uh, I just would like to briefly, uh, strongly echo, uh, both, uh, Mr. DuPont's and Mr. Hammond's comments. Um, the fact that the property was purchased recently, the fact the property's conditions, I'm sure was quite well known to the purchaser at the time. Um, eh, and it suddenly feels like the, it was purchased with the idea that a variance would be easily attained. Um, it just strikes me as not very careful planning on the part of, um, the purchaser. Um, cause these, if the foundation is, is in bad shape, as is being stated, clearly we've been understood by the purchaser that the situation here is difficult at best and bad news at worst for future use of this property. Um, and I just, um, I just, I, I, I don't. I don't know. It's, it's, it suddenly feels somewhat disingenuous, the representation here that we have to go with big lot coverage. I mean, this is a big building that came up last time, uh, at the last hearing. Um, it, the reason that we have thirty-five feet and two and a half story limits is because of this kind of situation where, yeah, it's thirty-five feet high, but it affects a three and a half story building. And although it's understood the, of why it has to be that because of the flood plain issues and the having the rules about being above a certain height and that sort of thing above the flood plain, I understand, but in the end, what you're left with is a blockhouse structure on a very exposed corner of property on the, the, that fronts on, well, at least its corner and side is to public Arlington land, very exposed, very large. And I don't know if it will feel like it's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood um, because of all those reasons. And, and so I don't know, this suddenly feels pretty, uh, pretty tenuous to me. That's all. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, there, other members of the public who wish to address this application? Seeing that I will go ahead and close the public comment period for this hearing. Um. So for the board, what had before it, it's, um.
But, Mr. Chairman.
For two separate.
If, if.
Oh, Mr. Hoffman, go ahead.
Um, please. I, I, I would respectfully request, uh, a continuance. Um, just for us to review this, we understand the comments, uh, from the board today about the variance request. Uh, but, uh, you know, before you is also a special permit request. And maybe there's a possibility, I don't know. Maybe there's a possibility that we can apply for a special permit without uh, variances, uh, but we, we may, uh, think about that. So I didn't know if the board um, had any feedback about the special permit, uh, with hypothetical that we could present maybe a revised project that does not require variance, how the board might feel about that.
Um. So cer- certainly, um, not not knowing what it would include is very difficult to say exactly. Um, certainly as, as you're well aware, the criteria for a special permit are very different than the, than the variance requirement. Um, while I do think that several members of the board have have mentioned that there, there do seem to be some issues in regards to the soil conditions that would directly lead to, um, uh, a hardship in terms of the number of stories, uh, that are required under the Arlington zoning by law. I think that there does seem also to be, um, not a finding among the board at the moment that there is a relationship between uh, the, the various criteria and the need for, uh, a larger footprint than would normally be allowed under the zoning by law. So, um, I, I think if you were to pursue a path that would involve a special per- just a special permit, I think that, um, you know, I, I can't say, you know, obviously how the board would, would act upon it, but I think the board, my, my sense and, and members of the board, feel free to correct me. Uh, my sense is that the board will be more amenable to looking at a special permit application than looking for a variance application specifically, one that's we are requiring, uh, some adherence to the condition of, uh, something about the topography and shape of the site.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Um. Mr. DuPont?
Yeah, so just a quick, uh, comment because I think the way I stated things, I was es- essentially saying that I understood Mr. Hanlon's point about the height of the property, but after I listened to Mr. LeBlanc, I was thinking that, you know, if somebody does come to us and says that there is soil condition that especially affects this parcel and not others in the district, I would want to know more about that. I'd want to have some evidence of that, some sort of a hydrological statement saying, you know, we've looked at this and it doesn't extend to next door or wherever. But I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that I wasn't saying I was in favor of the increase in stories based upon soil condition. It's something that I would consider, but it's not something I was in favor of just yet.
Thank you, Mr. DuPont, for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Uh, one of the things that we skipped over here because probably it's just a technical matter and we properly have skipped over it. Um, but this is a property that, if my recollection serves me, is uh, does not have, uh, is nonconforming with respect to lot size and uh, frontage. Am I right about that?
Correct, and that's the need for the special permit. Um.
And so, but just sort of, there's one, one of the things that gets you out of all of that is the, is the energy provision, which I've been desperately looking to try to find exactly the paragraph. And unfortunately, uh, we've reached that point of the night where every line of the zoning by law looks like every other line of the zoning by law.
I have the same section open, Mr. Hanlon. Um. Page sixty-five.
It's on page sixty-five?
Yes.
I have like five nineteen or whatever, something else.
Uh, then item eight of, uh, page sixty-nine exemption for energy efficient homes on R O R one and R two lots.
Okay, so basically that, that includes certain energy things which involve like, for example, a HERS score, what is it, forty-four? Or whatever, or whatever the general standard is. And, you know, as you know, that we've adopted both the specialized code and, uh, and, uh, uh, our fossil fuel free, uh, thing. So I'm sure that you are complying with that if this is new construction, but uh, it would, but you're not on the same building permit, but the next line says it's still okay if you do it by special permit. And I just encourage you to look at that and then sort of rectify it so we have the right record. Again, I'm not don't, if you're, uh, if you're following the building code in Arlington, then you're almost certainly meeting that. So it should be. But I, I just like the record to show that you are.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Uh, just want to interrupt, um, here. I have the geotechnical report in front of me. If you want, I can share the report with you.
If you don't mind, uh, emailing that to the board?
Sure, sure. I just, by looking at it, the, the boring test is kind of close to the neighbor and it shows some unquestionable, questionable soil. Urban fill, organic peat. So I'm assuming the neighbor has, uh, has some kind of, uh, um, bad soil too.
This, this, this area of town used to be known as the Great Swamp. Uh, back in the eighteen hundreds. So I by senses, there's a lot of, a lot of places. Um. So I note that the, the first hearing was on April eighth, and I believe we have, I know for special permits, we have ninety days before we have to close, which would be July seventh. So I'm not too concerned about that at this point. Um, I don't recall what the time scale is under variances for when the board has to act. Um. Alfred, I don't know if you remember.
I should know this and I don't, but I believe it's, um, it's, I actually don't think there's a time limit. I think it's. I think it's after you close the public hearing, you have to issue a decision, but I can't remember. Either way, I'm happy to provide any sort of extension the board needs in order to preserve their rights and I, I will state that and make that representation that we will give, uh, an extension.
How much time would you want for a continuance?
I, I would say, I would say a month, and if we're not there in a month, then we will um, certainly, um, seek a continuance before the hearing.
Okay, uh, so two meetings from now would be June tenth? And I would just ask, uh, Ms. Ralston, how does Ju- June tenth look at the moment?
Uh, Christian, we have four brand new ones on that date.
Okay.
So twenty-seventh, we only have one.
Oh, May twenty-seventh, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Might be too soon, though.
Yeah, I think it's probably too quick. Two weeks would be too quick, Mr. Alvin.
It, it's, it's not, for me, it's the engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly try, um, to look at, uh, shrink the, um, uh, the building footprint. We're, 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 we're committed to, um, to work with the board, so, um, yeah.
Is, is, is two weeks asking too much?
Um, we, we certainly can provide as everything we can within two weeks.
I mean, we, I mean, we can give you four weeks, we can give you six weeks, it's just two weeks is convenient for us, but if it's not going to work for you, we don't want to put you in that position.
And it, it's not convenient for us if you do two weeks and then you're not quite able to do what you want to do, and so then we have to do it again, so you should probably be realistic and not push harder than you think you could actually meet.
Okay, yeah, I think for, uh, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if that's okay.
All right, we'll keep it for June tenth. Um, and then think on the extension side, we're fine, um, because we've got, we're looking right now of ninety days after opening is in July, so I think we're fine on that regard at this point. Mr. Hanlon?
I wonder if we should just generally follow a policy of tolling on here. You, you know, we may find ourselves doing fine here, but then you're scrunched at the other end, and essentially if we've granted the continuance in order to accommodate the applicant, we ought to sort of make that happen during a timeout period if the applicant is agreeable to that, and then pick up where we left off when we, when we start the hearing again.
Yeah, it, it's just not my style to try to, um, you know, get a decision that way, so I'm happy to give any sort of extension the board needs, and I'm happy to toll.
Okay.
Asking for continuances.
All right, then in that case, I would move that the board requests an extension of the review period for docket three eight three six, one oh three Thorndike Street by thirty days to a total of one hundred twenty days from the opening of the public hearing on April eighth.
Second.
So then a roll call vote of the board, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so we are extended, and then I will move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington continue public hearing for docket three eight three six, one oh three Thorndike Street to Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So again, roll call vote of the board, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we are continued on one oh three Thorndike Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Good, Chairman, thank you, Lord.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, so then going back to our agenda, um, next up is three eight four four fourteen Wachusett Avenue. Um, this is a request for special permit under section, uh, five ten one, which is home occupation. Uh, applicant, uh, Sarah Alfaro Franco, so, um, Alfaro Franco, if you could introduce yourself and tell us what you would like to do.
Okay, so, um, uh, I'm a longtime resident of Arlington and have lived at this, uh, fourteen Wachusett, uh, unit two for the last twenty-five years. Uh, during the day, I work full-time in IT support, I'm also a Reiki practitioner. And over the last six or seven years, I've focused primarily on providing support to hospice patients and families, both in care facilities and at their homes. Um, I am now looking to, uh, begin seeing a limited number of clients in my own home. Uh, there will be no changes to the property and the physical structure will remain unchanged. So, uh, thank you for your time and consideration, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you. Um, is this a two-family house?
Correct.
And is your budding neighbor okay with the proposal?
Yes.
Excellent.
And even on the either side too. Not just downstairs, but.
Um, how many clients would you be seeing at a time?
One.
Just one?
Yep.
Uh, and approximately how many clients per day do you think would sort of be that?
Uh, I work full-time, so, uh, it's probably, um, my work is probably going to be, um, if I'm lucky, um, one a day, uh, possibly, uh, two on weekends. So probably two on Saturdays, um, because it takes a while to see them and break down and things like that. So we're talking about if less than five a week, if I'm doing well.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, customers who are coming to you, would they park on the street?
Correct. And we also have a driveway, yeah, um, but there's plenty of space on our street.
Okay, and Wachusett's public in that range, right?
Correct.
Street?
Yes.
Um, and looking at the, uh, plan you had provided, uh, I think it was thirteen by twenty-six was the area you had identified on the top floor for the use, which is three hundred thirty-eight square feet.
Yep.
And then, um, so the are there questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open for a public comment. Public comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. We directed the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Those who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the React tab in the Zoom application, or if you're calling in by phone, you made L star nine uh, to indicate you'd like to speak. Are there members of the public who would like to address this application? Uh, as reminded, this is number three eight four four fourteen Wachusett Avenue. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Uh, so what the board is, has before, this is an application for, uh, special, um, special permit for home occupation. Uh, the reason that it's before us is a special permit is that under section five four three. As we've learned last time, um, if there are customers or pupils that are seen on site, a special permit is required for a home occupancy. Otherwise, a home occupancy is allowed by right in the district. So I just want to quickly review, um, the definition of, of the, of home occupation. Um, so home occupation is an accessory use which is carried on entirely within a dwelling unit. This is, uh, incidental and subordinate to the dwelling use. So this is, it does not include retail sale of merchandise on the premises. I would assume that is correct?
Correct.
Um, and it does not alter the residential character of the lot or the building as regulated under the bylaw, so that is correct. Um, a home occupation shall not include, uh, personal service establishment uses. Uh, so the use itself, um, sort of looking at the categories, it's not a personal service use because it's not related to personal needs. Um, it's not a business or professional office. It's most related, appears to be, uh, to medical office clinic as related healthcare service. Um, the way I see this, if there's, um, and so that isn't allowed, uh, use of home occupation. This is not a commercial stable or kennel. And it is not the case of teaching more than three pupils simultaneously or more than one for musical instruction. So in my opinion, this does meet all the requirements for home occupation, uh, then it moves down to section five, ten and one, which reg- provides further regulation, um, but there are no non-residents shall be employed within, which this is a sole practitioner who lives at the residence. Uh, not more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area of the dwelling unit in the principal building not to exceed six hundred square feet is devoted to the home occupation, and no stock and trade commodities or products shall occupy space beyond those limits. We've noted that three hundred thirty-eight square feet, um, identified for this use, um, and I believe that is less than twenty-five percent of the floor area for the unit. Yes, it should be. There should be no display of goods or wear is visible from the street. Uh, all advertising devices visible from off lot are specifically prohibited. Buildings and premises occupied shall not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood due to the exterior appearance, emission of odor, gas, smoke, dust, noise, electrical disturbance, or any other way in a structure, uh, containing more than one dwelling unit, the use shall not become objectionable or detrimental to any residential use within the structure. We trust that, and any such building shall include no feature of design not customary to buildings into residential use. But those are all the required requirements for home occupation, which this meets, so then all that's left is a special permit uh, for, to allow the, um, customers to be seen on site. Um, there are, beyond what we just covered for, um, under section five, ten, one for home occupation, the only other uh, findings the board needs to make are the general findings under section three, three, three for a special permit. So the first is that the adverse effects, the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Um, this is a health-related service. It's being o- offered to residents of Arlington that they may otherwise not have readily, readily readily accessible to them, um, and it is done in a way that would have a very minimal impact on, uh, the neighborhood of the town. Uh, so I would find that the adverse effects do not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Uh, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit. It is allowed under five, four, three, it's allowed by special permit, and it's further regulated by section five, ten, one. Uh, the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Uh, this is a service that is being offered to, uh, to the residents, as had been expressed by the applicant. Um, she has a lot of work with, uh, with hospice care and with other, uh, people who have other underlying medical needs, and this is something that can provide, uh, further relief to those people, and, um, that is a service that, uh, can certainly benefit the town of Arlington, and so, uh, it will be considered desirable to public convenience. Uh, will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. It's noted, this is probably maximum five, uh, additional vehicle trips to the property over a course of a week. Uh, was certainly not something that would, uh, cause any, um, additional traffic congestion, uh, it will not overload any public systems, um. The special regulations, we've already covered, those are under section five, ten, one. Uh, requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Uh, this will happen essentially invisib- invisibly uh, within the, the property as it is today. Um, requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare. Actually, in fact, it'll be the exact opposite of that, providing a, a service to benefit the, uh, public health and welfare. And, um, the last is requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. This won't change, um, fundamentally, the, the use of this as a residential property and residential properties are what we have in residential districts, so, um, I would find that that is met as well. Are there any questions from the board or comments in regards to those findings, either under section three, three, three or under section five, ten, one? Seeing none. Should the board vote to approve, approve this special permit application, there are three standard conditions, which we actually haven't read into the record yet tonight, so I'll go ahead and read those now. Uh, the first is the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with his application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Uh, number two is that the building inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures that anytime they determine that violations are present. Building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning by law and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D of the Massachusetts general laws and institute non-criminal complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And condition number three, the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. Are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be, uh, appropriate or required for this special permit grant? Seeing none, um, I would ask Mr. Hanlon if he would, um, oversee the, uh, the writing of a, um, decision in regards to this matter, uh, in favor of approval? I believe that was a, a, a yes with the mute on.
I have audio on it. I'm sorry, I have audio on it. Yes, I would.
Perfect. Um, so unless there's any other questions from the board, I will move that we close the public hearing for docket, uh, three eight four four fourteen Wachusett Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, um, you know, Mr. LeBlanc? What was that?
That was Mr. Branowski, it's seconded it.
Um, so what we'll do, uh, the, the board will vote to close the hearing, and then our, our subsequent hearing on the twenty-seventh, uh, we will vote on the final decision, um, at which point, uh, copy will go to the town clerk, and then, um, it just needs to be registered with the uh, with the board of registrars. So final vote for the, to close the hearing, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are closed on fourteen Wachusett Avenue. Thank you so much for coming before us this evening. Apologize for the wait.
Problem. Thank you for your time and your.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon?
Yes, Mr. Hanlon? To observe that the success rate of applicants who begin their hearings after ten thirty at night is much higher than the average overall.
I hope you're not, not encouraging us to start hearings at ten thirty.
But it is a consolation to some of the people who've been waiting a long time.
Quite true, quite true. Okay, so going back to our agenda, uh, next up is docket three eight four six fifty-eight Edmund Road. Um, this is a special permit application under section five, three, nine, D and eight, one, three, B of the zoning bylaws, uh, Charles and Sharon Hannan. Uh, so I could go ahead and ask them to introduce themselves and tell us what they would like to do.
Hello, I'm Charles Hannan. This is my wife Sharon. And I am thrilled to hear Mr. Hanlon's, um, observation about, um, petitions after, uh, ten thirty. Okay, so. Uh, fundamentally, we need to replace our front porch. So it's, um, it's been in disrepair for quite a while, and, uh, we're finally getting around to, uh, replacing it. It's a masonry structure right now. Relatively small. We'd like to replace it with a fairly sizable deck. Uh, we have a very nice view from the front of our house looking down, um, over, like, I'll call it the Mass Ave Valley. And we'd like to have a, a nice sized, uh, deck that we can make use of, and we would like to put a roof on it. It's our understanding that adding a roof is what brings us into the situation of requiring a, um, special permit. Um, got just two things we'd like to show you, some images that I don't think were transmitted by our uh, by our developer.
Uh, Ms. Ralston, can you make sure they have permission to share?
I don't know which one is the, the photograph.
Okay, um, let's see, yeah, can we? So I'm just looking to see how we, okay, here we go.
You should be all set.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, thanks.
See, yeah, I think if you click, um, share screen one. Then, then you have hit the share button.
Share, okay, and then here. Yep, sorry, I'm gonna bring over the, um, the photos of our current front porch.
Oh, my word. Oh, my word.
Yeah, 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 well, we we recently cut down a couple of bushes that were there in preparation for doing the work and then it became really obvious how bad it is, okay? So we have to do something here and what we're looking to do is a deck that would run from. About where the edge of the. The current steps are before the garage going to the left. The entire then, you know, width of the house and extending out about eight feet from the front of the house. So, you know, a nice deck. And we'd like to put a roof on it just from the point of view of having some shade, I think. Here's the image with with the roof on it.
And I'm assuming that the there would be posts at the front to carry the.
Yeah, yeah, this was, I I taught myself sketchup in about an hour and this is what I managed. Our, our, yeah, our builder Brendan Driscoll will do a proper. Framing for it.
Not bad for an hour's work on sketchup.
So that's, we've spoken to several neighbors, the postcards generated quite a bit of interest and I've had several discussions with people on our street plus on adjacent streets. Everyone thinks it should look really nice when it's done, so they're pretty enthusiastic. No one's expressed any negative feedback.
How will you be closing it in underneath?
It'll be like lattice work or some type of. You know, wooden enclosure. I think, can we go back to the maybe the. You have a photograph from the street? The second. That's interesting.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Yes, I am a triple A member, but. I guess you just go.
Sorry, just stuck.
Yeah, we have another photograph that would show.
Here we go.
Oh, there it is, okay. So, yeah, so basically, you know, we'd be eliminating the whole masonry structure and everything underneath would just be. You know, lattice work or some kind of. Wooden enclosure just to prevent animals or, you know, what have you from getting underneath there. So it would be closed in.
Right.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board? Oh. Somebody have a question?
Yeah, I have one this very quick. We're looking at pictures here and they're not sort of the things that Mr. Champa uses to approve these things and I'm just. Wondering whether we're at a point where the drawings that are submitted as part of the application. Adequately describe all this so that Mr. Hannan. Can can, assuming we grant him a special permit can go to Mr. Champa and. All of the drawings are in order so Mr. Champa can say, if that's what the board had in front of it and say yes.
That's a good question. Let's come back. We will come back to that. If I could go ahead and ask you to stop the share. And then go ahead and open the hearing for public comment. Public comment takes as it relates to the matter at hand should be directed to the board for the purpose of helping to inform our decision. Those members of public wishing to address the application can digitally raise their hand using the raise hand button under the react tab and zoom application. Those calling in by phone may dial star nine. You'd be recognized by the chair as to give your name and address for the record and given time for your questions and comments. Are there any members of the public wish to address this application? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period for this application. So the board has before it, this is a special permit. It's filed under section five, three, nine, D. Which allows for the extension, which requires that the extension or enclosure of a. Deck or porch receive a special permit and also under section eight, one, three, B of the zoning bylaw. Regards to the extension of the of the the change of the front yard setback, which is non-conforming. In reading through the bylaw, I did have a question. Pass the board. So this is filed, as I said, under five, three, nine, D. But essentially, the entire porch is being deck is being removed. And replaced by a larger. Porch. And. I'm wondering if it's more appropriate that the board consider this under section five, three, nine, A. Which requires that porches and enclosed entrances larger than that allowed above, which is twenty-five square feet. May extend into the minimum yard regulations otherwise provided for the district by special permit. Some ways it kind of feel, I I guess like. My question I would have for the for the applicant is, do you have a permit already for the deck?
No, I don't believe so. I think they're waiting for the special permit.
Right, he tried to get it, yeah.
Okay, so maybe in that case, five, three, nine, A might make more sense for. Section because this is essentially a new, an entirely new structure. But it does it does not change the board's ability to approve it. It just changes. What? The board is approving it under. And five, three, nine, A allows it to be built within the minimum yard, so we don't actually need to make a determination under eight, one, three, B. We can do it all under five, three, nine, A. Just ask Mr. Hanlon, Mr. DuPont if they agree.
That seems right, although I'm not sure I would agree if it was earlier than ten thirty.
DuPont?
I I will just say, I thought it was under A, so I was there already.
Okay. So then. That brings us back to the. Question about the documentation, so. The board has a few different, we have a rough plan sketch. We have a couple of these sort of three-dimensional sketches. We don't have a formal drawing set per se. So.
You mean in terms of like a framing diagram, that sort of thing?
Sort of a drawing that we could hold up after the project and say, yes, you built what looks like is in the picture. So. My my question, I I guess I would ask Mr. Holly and Mr. LeBlanc. Do you think we can by condition? Sort of indicate roughly what the parameters for the project are, or do you think we need more? Detailed drawing?
I would say we probably could. Do it by condition. Given that it's a pretty simplistic. Thing what we're doing here, where we're just creating a new porch of a certain dimension, I think some of the drawings that are included. There are a couple, there is a plan that does show generally the layout and the dimensions of the porch. I think the thing that's lacking the the most is the roof over the porch. Yeah, and of a more detailed understanding of it. I think we could look at the three D diagrams that we do see in the. Documentation in front of us and sort of as. Architects understand what the intent is. But not necessarily something that's detailed is what you're saying.
Okay.
Yep, that Mr. Chair, that would be my two cents too.
Okay. Quickly drafting a condition. Okay. All right, so I have two. So we have the standard three conditions which are read into the. Record at the prior, so we have those. And then I would propose two additional conditions. The first would read that the porch shall not exceed twenty, excuse me, eight feet by twenty feet in area. The roof shall be supported by columns along the front. The roof shall not. Shall the roof shall be sloped and not extend more than twelve inches beyond the area of the deck. So that's what gives us the sizes of things and then the. The second would be that the area below the porch shall be enclosed and screened from view. And then, as we have done on similar cases. There'll be an additional condition that the applicant shall not file an application to enclose the porch for a minimum of three years after recording of this special permit. So I think that those would cover. The general parameters of what the porch size ought to be. And it's something that the building department could can use in order to confirm compliance with the decision. So section five, three, nine does not. Oh, please.
It's like clarification of what you just said. You said the area under the porch would be enclosed. And then screened from view. So are those two different things or by enclosing I have screened it from view? Or do I, or are those two different conditions?
Does that you, that it's that it's not just wide open? So if you enclose it with. Just lattice work, that's fine. If you enclose it with, you know, with farm board or whatever, so it's entirely enclosed, you could do that also. But just not that it's. Just open.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify, if if screened from view was implying that we had to put, you know, shrubbery or something, so.
Oh, okay.
Green from view.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
Appreciate that, yep. So section five, three, nine does not have any special regulations associated with them, so in order to grant a special permit, it's just the conditions. That are listed under section three, three, three in the zoning bylaw. The primary is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. So what the the applicants are seeking to do is to replace a front entrance, which is effectively failing at this point. With a larger porch structure, which will allow them to be more engaged with the neighborhood in front of them and and as they said, to enjoy the the view. To the to the Millbrook Valley, to the. South of them. And those benefits would not. Be of the would certainly not have any adverse effects that would be greater than the benefits. Requested use is allowed by special permit, as we noted, under five, three, nine, A, the board can grant by special permit a porch larger than would typically be allowed by right. Number three, the requested use is essential or desirable, the public convenience or welfare. It's desirable to provide. Additional to provide space that's usable by the the owners of the property to enjoy their property. This also allows them to to better engage with their neighborhood and be a part of the neighborhood. And. Creates a a nice space for for them. Requested use will not generate, create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. This won't change the traffic pattern to the property. And it's not anywhere near the pedestrian zone, so it won't have any impact on pedestrian safety. It will not overload any public system. There are no special regulations under five, three, nine. Requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Based on what we've seen and the sizes that are being proposed, this is a porch that would. Fit in generally with the neighborhood. I would note that there are not many porches similar to this in the neighborhood at the at this point, but given its location on the street. It feels that this is a suitable location for this. And the requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. This won't cause a detriment to anyone. And it will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. It maintains the single-family character, the single-family neighborhoods, so. I find that the board would be able to grant a special permit in this case. Are there any questions or comments about those findings?
I guess I don't, I don't have anything.
None. Mr. Hanlon, would you be willing to oversee the drafting of a decision in favor of the application?
I would, Mr. Chairman. I would be inclined to delegate that one to one of the architects. One of which has just pretty much dictated a special permit into the record already.
We will certainly do that. Okay, so with that. I will move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington. Close the public hearing for docket three, eight, four, six, fifty-eight Edmund Road.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So the board will, in a second, will be voting to close the public hearing on fifty Edmund Road. We will then prepare a decision which will be. Circulated and drafted form to the board and voted on at the next public hearing, which is on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. At which point it'll be forwarded to the town clerk's office and then you can go ahead and. Have it registered with the registry of deeds and get your building permit.
Okay, excellent.
That's good.
So with that, vote of the board to close the hearing, Mr. DuPont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are closed on fifty-eight Edmund Road. Thank you so much. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your reference.
I'd like the record to reflect that that took twenty minutes and forty-eight seconds.
And the benefit of not being at town meeting right now is we don't have anybody shouting to try to adjourn.
Or motion to terminate today.
Even more so. So this brings us to item eleven on our agenda, which is docket three, eight, four, seven, one, fifty-six, Brattle Street. This is an application filed by John and Sally DeAngelis for a special permit under section five, four, two, B, six, which is the large addition. So I know they're here and I believe the architect is here as well, so I go ahead and ask them to introduce themselves and tell us what they're proposing to do.
Name is John DeAngelis, my wife here.
Sally DeAngelis.
So we are proposing that. That there's a separate, well, there's. The lot is big enough to accommodate a two-car garage and a pushout of the the kitchen. And that's essentially what we're proposing. Above the two-car garage would be a. A small bedroom, a master bedroom. And bathroom.
If you like, if Sally and John don't mind, I can certainly. Chime in and give a little a brief synopsis of the project if. That'd be fine. You think that's a good idea? Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Uh, forgive me.
Mr. Ross, if you could make make sure Mr. Dixon has the ability to share.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah.
He is all set.
Yeah, I I I thank the board for their time. I'm kudos to everyone on the board for being able to stay up this late. I forgive me if I. Start to pass out. It's way past my bedtime. So, yeah, I think I've I think I've been given a screen share here. Why don't you, why don't we start with? Can everyone see?
Yes.
The site plan, so a site plan, just sort of. Briefly, can you see my cursor moving?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe even helps if I do a little. Right, so we have the existing one-story, two, two and a half-story house. One-story porch on the front. One story in the back, existing deck. Outline in red is the proposed addition. And outline in red in front is the proposed driveway. Existing driveway is here and there's also. This outline here, which is, it exists. this outline here, which is, it exists also an existing curb cut on the property. As you can see, delineated here is a bit of retainage. There's we're on Arlington Heights, so there's a pretty pretty steep grade up this street. Presents, uh, some challenges, certainly. And so are folks now seeing floor plans?
Yep, the existing conditions.
Yes, okay, good. So, um, this is just sort of part of the, part of the existing house that some partial demo would be proposed to be done to, so that we could connect much-needed additional space, which would serve as a mudroom connector and also larger kitchen, because currently the existing kitchen just kinda is this little galley space right here. So this area where I show my cursor, that's the, is the existing wall and we're breaking through to create this mudroom connector and larger kitchen. And so doing also getting a much-needed two-car garage on the property. And with use of flights of stairs, we're able to get from higher elevation point A, the garage level to this lower elevation, which is, which will be all in line with the existing finished floor of the main house. And we have a plan that shows what would, the, the space that would be living space that would be over the proposed garage. And so the, the trick and the number of tricks in doing this sort of thing and I think a big important thing for me, when I'm helping homeowners do something like this is to do it in such a way that it looks like it's really meant to be part of the house and not just some box that we tacked on to the end of it. And given, given the challenge of the, the steepness of the grade and creating the functionality of, of actually being able to pull in to the driveway. Sort of, I think a main aspect of this is to keep the form and the scale of the addition very much secondary to the main house, so it doesn't start to steal the thunder from what is clearly the main original structure of the house. And so as you can see, there were pains taken to keep the proposed ridge height of the garage lower than the main ridge of the existing house. And because the grade is quite a bit higher at the upper end of Brattle than it is on the other end of the house, the finished ridge height at this end is more like eighteen feet, whereas the finished ridge height at this level existing ridge height is hovering at around twenty-eight, six. So. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Somehow, I don't know what's going on with my, on eight, twenty-one, when the cursor was showing that there should be a ridge to the original house. I don't actually see that. It looks like a blank space to me.
Okay, you're not seeing this line?
No, I, I don't. I guess if I really
Okay.
Really try hard, maybe I am, but it looks like.
How is that? Does that help?
Better. That's much better.
Okay. And make it even bigger? How's that?
Yep, it's darker, but yeah, that's good.
Okay, great.
Okay, now I get it.
Okay.
You can see that, that not seeing that changes the underlying message.
Uh, yeah, it does, right? Yeah, how about that yellow dot right there? Do you see that?
Got it. I got it.
Yeah, there's a yellow dot there. How's that?
We're doing it.
All right, good. Anyway, yeah, there's the ridge in the background. Right? View from the rear of the property. A section cut through the connector. Actually looking toward the new garage. So that's the inter, the intervening roof between the main house and the garage and then cut in the other direction, looking at the main house. Showing where the connector the connector's profile. They're cross-section through the proposed garage showing, uh, how we get from the main house finished floor to the garage level. So I hope that helps a little bit. It may help actually if I did a reshare here and then I think often they help visualize. Can folks see a three-D?
Yep, we see it.
So, you know, here it is. Here is the main house. And the, the proposed addition. And it may even help uh, to see that this is largely what the lot is now. Okay, so hopefully that helps get people, I mean, picture's worth a thousand words, right? So. So yeah, I know, we, we know that we're, we've, we've crossed some, uh, limit threshold that has brought us here in front of you. In other words, this isn't being done by rate. And, um, because we're covering it more than a certain amount of impermeable, uh, has required us to hire a geotechnical engineer, which we've provided the required documents for the stormwater management on this site. Which are folks seeing plans again on their screen?
There we go. Yep.
Okay, um, sorry, bear with me a moment. Uh, yeah, drainage plan. What, what more? What more can I say?
Could you go back to the site plan? So the, the side wall of the, so the, I guess it's the northeast side of the garage, um, the uphill side. That's ten point two feet off. So do you know approximately what the grade is of this? Where the house meets the, where the garage meets the land on that side? Trying to get a sense as to how much more the site right rises between there and the property line.
From here to the property line?
Yeah.
Pretty accurate representation back on the three-D model. And I think that, do you see, do you see? Do you see this profile? It's cut here.
Uh, you're not, you're not sharing at the moment.
Do you see that?
You're, you're not sharing at the moment.
I'm not, okay. Well, then you're probably not seeing it. All right. Let me try that again. Okay, now are we seeing it?
It's loading. Yeah, we, okay, there we go.
Okay, so you, you see this little tool and the little, little tape measure?
Okay.
Okay, so it, it's I would say it's probably not dead-on accurate, but it's pretty darn close because I've taken the topo info and I've dialed it into this model. And I'd say that it's just shy of two feet. That it's rising from this point to the high point at the property line is, was that your question?
Yes, so you had said before that the height of the garage was approximately eighteen feet, I think, from that, or was it eighteen feet from the driveway or eighteen feet from the top of the retaining wall?
Let's, where, where that number came from here. There we go, eighteen, five, and that's at the property line to the ridge.
Okay.
Okay? So they're probably more like.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little, yeah. Does that, does that help?
It does.
Christian? Yeah, okay.
And I know there had been a, the, the board is in receipt of a letter from the budding neighbor on that side, on the northeastern side. And the town GIS map was unhelpful as to the relative location of the houses relative to the sightlines. Um, and I think you had provided there were an answer as to how far the abutting neighbor's house is from the property line. Do you recall what that number was?
I, I did. I, I, I have to, I have to say that I, I chuckled because I saw that and it alerted me. I, I had never I've definitely had surveyors make a mistake before, but I've never had someone ask if the, someone else's building was actually on the property, homeowner's property. That was an odd, uh, needless to say, but it did alert me where I called the surveyor right away and said, hey, has there ever been a case where you did not alert a client that the other person's building was on their property? The answer was no.
Yeah.
But, uh, I happen to live in Winchester, which is just a few minutes away. It didn't take me long to just pop over immediately with a laser and I stood right here. Do you see my cursor?
Yeah.
Right there. And I shot a laser from there to the neighbor's face of the neighbor's house. Okay?
Yep.
And I took that number and I subtracted it from, well, what the surveyor tells me the distance is from here to here.
Okay.
Okay? And I got eight foot six. So that kind of indicates to us the level of accuracy that, that ass- assessor's map is off by.
A little disconcerting. All right.
Sorry, it's late. I'm.
No, no, no worries. All right, um, so just going, looking through the application briefly. So the, the property, the lot size is conforming, the frontage is conforming, the lot coverage is conforming. The front yard depth, um, is pre-existing non-conformity and it's not changing. The left side is pre-existing non-conforming and not changing. The right side is being proposed to be reduced from forty-eight feet to ten point two feet, uh, which would still be conforming with the bylaw. The rear yard depth is conforming. Proposed height is conforming. Actually by building more farther up the hill, it's actually going to technically reduce the height of the building, which is a little odd. The landscape open space and the usable open space, um, both appear to be conforming. And the, so the reason that this is before us is under section five, four, two, B, six, which is the large addition. If there's a, an addition that is, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet or larger, uh, beyond the footprint of the existing house, uh, then it, there's a special permit required, um, and that there are additional findings that the board needs to make, um, in order to approve the application. Um, are there questions from members of the board before I open for public comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I'm, I'm just, as, as you know, the, one of the major considerations on large additions is not just the relationship to the lot line, but how the buildings relate to one another. And I wondered if, uh, I remember, I thought I remembered, uh, receiving a document indicating that the house next door was located eight point two feet from the lot line. And Mr. Douglas, if I understood the way his, if I understood what he was saying is that when he did the calculation, it was like eight, eight point six feet off where the boundary is, where the, the exterior wall of the garage is. And those two numbers probably can't coexist. So I wa, I'm just wondering if we're, if we should just, I'm wondering how far the house is next door from the face of the, the garage facing in that direction on the right side as we look at it.
Mr. Dixon?
I, I, I'm sorry. I didn't quite follow your, I, I, I want to make sure that you're.
I believe Mr. Hanlon's question was the distance from the side of the proposed garage to the abutting neighbor's house.
Okay, so.
Be the ten point two plus the eight point six.
Okay, yeah, exactly. We're at ten foot two, which is what we're, are from the property line. Right? Are we in agreement with, the survey says that we're ten foot two from the property line?
There, yes, right.
Yes. Okay. Now I, it's, it's, it's rare that I have a request or that there is a request for the homeowner of the property to begin surveying distances on the abutter's property.
Agreed.
I don't know that that is a, any kind of requirement for the homeowner to verify any location of building on the neighbor's property. I did, just as a friendly gesture, go over there and personally shot a laser from the building, the face of the house to the other house. And the measurement I got, which I'm not a surveyor, and, and calculated back indicated to me that the neighbor's house is about eight feet away from the line. So if we add that eight feet, the, to the ten point two, I'd say we're just a hair over eighteen feet away. I hope that helps.
No, that is, that, that does help. And Mr. Douglas, you may, or excuse me, Mr. Dixon, you may very may want to pay attention to our particular bylaw, which pays attention to, in these kinds of cases, to the relative positions of the buildings, but that's what I wanted to know is, so it's around eighteen feet. It's about eighteen feet away. Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Go ahead. Mr. LeBlanc?
I just had, uh, one question. What's the width of the driveway? The proposed driveway?
Yeah, so we have the driveway from retaining wall to retaining wall is about twenty-three feet. Now the, there would be some provision made from keeping the curb cut at the required twenty would never be greater than the curb cut requirement.
Um, Mr. Chair, was it, uh, twenty-two feet is the maximum width on the driveway, is that correct?
And tell you that just a second. Section six one ten.
You see that dash line that I just dialed right there? Where my table measure is on? If it is indeed twenty-two feet, I don't see that. John and Sally, you can chime in. I don't know that we'd have any issue with just ending the driveway. To meet that requirement, that's fine. And then we could just have. An area for planting or adjust the retaining wall accordingly.
Yeah, so the. The section of the bylaws, five one, uh, excuse me, six one ten A. I think it's still that, uh. Parking residential districts, uh, off-street parking shall. Not be permitted area between the front lot line minimum, except on the driveway, not exceeding twenty feet in width, leading to the required parking space. So a twenty-foot. Driveway. So you would just need to adjust that.
Twenty feet, okay.
Twenty feet, but that's.
So the driveway itself cannot be wider than the required, the maximum curb cut. Is that what we're getting at?
That is what it appears. There's an exception of twenty-four feet for specific corner lot exceptions.
Okay.
Twenty feet is the bylaw.
You got it. We'll make it happen.
Are there other questions from the? Board? See, no, go ahead and I'm gonna open, if I could ask, uh, Mr. Dixon, if you could go ahead and stop the share.
Absolutely.
And then, uh. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the. Meeting for public comment. Public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand should be directed to the board for the purpose of helping to form its decision. For those, uh. On Zoom, you may, uh, use the. Raise hand feature and the react tab at the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in by phone, dial star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair. Ask to give your name and address for the record, and you may address the board with your questions or comments. With that. Uh, I see we have a hand raised. We have Mr. Steve Moore.
Surprise, surprise, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, a, a couple of things, um, the first, uh, being, uh, the trees, I, uh. It's hard to know whether or not I was looking at something current, but I was trying to get an aerial view since, um, the street mapping didn't line up with this particular street. Uh, this part of, uh, Brattle Street. So it looks to me like to build this, they're gonna take, you're gonna, the applicant's gonna have to take a significant tree both. Uh, up against the lot line of the, um, the person at, uh, one sixty-four. As well as right where the driveway is currently, is that correct?
Mr. Dixon?
Oh, hi, yeah, um, or, uh, would you like me to help clarify that? Because I know we didn't touch on that clearly. Can I share again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're curious about the trees on the property.
No, no, I get it. Let's, uh, let, I'm gonna be completely transparent about this. Um. Do you see that, the plot plan, the law plan? Okay. You see that? Yellow dot? It's over that black dot. Do you see that?
The T twenty-four?
T twenty-four, that's tree twenty-four. And then there's tree T twenty-two. So those are the two trees that Mr. Moore. Has pointed out. And yes, those trees have to be removed. Um. And. Let me give you an idea what those look like, because I knew this was gonna come up, so bear with me a moment. Do you see the photo?
Yes.
Do you see those two yellow, orange arrows?
Yep.
Yeah, so that tree. And that tree are the two trees that I just. Showed you in yellow.
Okay.
Uh, so we're quite aware that. And you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. But. There's in Arlington. A guy that you call the tree warden?
We do.
Yeah. So I suspect that, given the scope of work here. That we're gonna have to meet with the tree warden and he might have to, he might say something like. Uh, I don't know, like. A lot of towns in Massachusetts have a provision that says, hey, if you're taking, doing a certain amount of work or taking a. Certain amount of trees out, that you gotta. Plant a couple of new ones of. I don't know, four inches or three inches in caliper and ten feet high, one, one in the front and one in the back or something like that, I don't know.
Uh, as we have it, Mr. Morris is a member of our tree committee.
What a coincidence, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the, the tree warden, uh, his name is Tim McQuever and he works for the DPW and yes, because of the size of this addition, you're gonna have to do a tree plan. And the tree plan, uh, will be a little bit more than what you have there, but not much. It, it basically shows the trees on the property. Both the trees on the private property as well as on the public way. And I can tell you that these trees, which are large and healthy. Um, and they're both within the setbacks required on the property are gonna have a significant fee attached to them. A twenty-four inch tree is a pretty significant tree, as the tree warden will tell you. And, um, the, the fee will not be. The fee will be high, but you will find out about that when you go and talk with the tree warden and do the tree plant. Uh, that's why I was asking about the trees, because. One of the, uh, the, the values of the town is to try and retain and grow its tree canopy and. In this particular case, the opposite is occurring. And when the trees are in the setback, they're, they're known as protective trees. And that's what you're planning on taking here, unfortunately. So I just wanted to make you aware that, that that is an issue that will have to be. Um, figured out. It's not that they can't come down, but there'll be a significant cost attached. Not in the taking of them, because. The big trees are gonna be expensive to take down anyway, but there's a fee that you have to pay the town, just so you know.
Um, thanks for giving us a heads up on that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's the, uh, that's the first issue. The second was in looking at the, um, the inclination here of Battle Street, which is significant. Um, and the way you have the, the, uh, the plot graded with the new garage driveway and the. The retaining walls and such. I think it probably makes a lot of excellent drainage sense to put those green spaces next to the, uh. Uh, retaining walls, uh, on either side of the driveway, because you're gonna have a lot of water. Standing, uh, in the driveway and also flowing down the street. And in looking at the three D map, I was a little. Surprised to see, I can imagine water that's gonna come down Brattle Street during a, a heavy rainstorm. And it's gonna end up right on your new front yard, so I don't know how you're gonna handle that. You're gonna need to handle it though, because. I, the, the grades are all very complex here, it seems to me. So, uh. Uh, anyway, tho- those are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That, uh, go ahead, uh. Perfect, um. Next on our list, uh, is Deborah Dill.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
I, um, hi, John and Sally. My name's Deborah Dill. I live at seventeen Rockland Avenue. I'm a direct abutter to John and Sally's house. Um, on the north side. And, um, Steve, if I knew that you were here and on the tree committee, then I would not have spent the last four hours. Because you brought up exactly what I was going to bring up was Article sixteen and that these are probably protected trees. Because they're very old and very healthy, um, or they're very well established and very healthy. And I worry also about. Impermeable space. Being actually increased by the lack of those trees being there and the way that they take up the water, so the stormwater. Um, but I will, so thank you for bringing that up. That's why I've been here waiting, um, and. The other thing I'm, I have actually, um, a, 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 just a couple of questions for, uh. Guy and, and John and Sally, if you know the answers, um. Are you, is there a foundation or a basement being put in, or is this just a poured foundation for both of these additions? I'm just wondering, we're on ledge, you know, we have experienced a lot of blasting and, and drilling in this neighborhood. Um, for new construction, and I'm just wondering what that's gonna look like.
Mr. Dixon, can you address that?
Absolutely, yeah, sorry, am I still on?
Yep.
Yeah, um. Let me share again. And so that I got, as I'm talking, we got some visual. Help, are you looking at plans there?
Site plan, yep.
Okay, let me see if I actually have. Uh, maybe not. Yeah, so the answer to your question, full foundation, absolutely not. Like, are we aware that there's likely ledge? Yes, uh, absolutely. Do we know that that's a subsurface condition? Yes. There will be, uh. As required by state code, a four-foot deep foundation wall. Um. And so, yes, a frost wall will need to be poured to meet the current, the, the required code. Um. And that is it. Uh, so. The short answer is no, there will not be a full basement here, um, and. The answer to your question, will there be blasting? I think the answer to that is. No. If we hit ledge. Then we deal with that condition. Uh. Not by blasting.
So by pounding.
No, not by pounding.
So, so the, will the foundation wall go to the ledge or what's the?
Yes, that will get pinned. To the ledge, so there would be some. Drills that are, there were holes drilled into the ledge. And then. Uh, the foundation wall would get pinned to it. But that's all subsurface, like you'd cross that. Like. Cross that bridge when you get to it, if you get to it, and hopefully we don't.
Do you have a sense as to how deep the ledge is in the area of the house? Or the proposed addition, I should say?
No, like I say, it's, you know. Even if we did a test. Uh, dig. At intervals, there would be no guarantee that we didn't dig coincidentally where there isn't ledge.
Quite true. So the plan is not to. Remove ledge, but to work around it. Essentially.
Yeah, I mean, that, it, it would be. Um, not within the budget scope to start blasting. It would also be very irresponsible.
Miss Dill, does that address your question?
Um, somewhat, yeah.
Did you have another question?
No, I just, um. I, I understand, let me just say what I understand is that you have to build a four-foot deep, four-foot deep foundation. Wall. Around. The proposed area, surface area, and that if you hit ledge, which you most likely will in this neighborhood. Um, you will. You'll, it won't be four feet deep there, you'll attach it to the ledge.
Uh, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Um, and just the final thing is that I noticed you had some retaining walls, um, both around the driveway and. Um. And it looked like it went back behind. The proposed garage. Um, I'm just concerned that if those come up. Above grade there, or those up above grade at all, because the water does come down the hill. Um, and I'm just worried about it pooling in neighbors. Um, particularly, uh, the train of yard.
Yeah, we would not be intentionally creating a. Swimming pool. In the yard, no, absolutely not. So the answer to your question is no, will the retaining wall? Create. Potential flooding in the backyard, no.
Those are all my questions, and thank you, Steve Moore, for being so eloquent with your description and question. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Dill, um. Mr. Moore, did you want to address the board again, or is your hand just still up from before?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, as I said, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street, I, I. Apologize for contributing to the poor current sleep happens and habits of you still. I didn't, I, if I'd known, I wouldn't have stayed up so late myself. But, um, it, it, regarding this. Potential for ledge. I assume the wall has to be four feet because. Of some requirement. Um, if you were to discover a ledge one foot down, one foot would not be enough of a. Concrete floor or whatever's required, you would have to remove some of the ledge. And I have to assume that's via pounding.
So the, the four-foot requirement is, it's a frost wall, so it's to get the footing below, at least four feet below the surface. So that the ground under it won't freeze. So if you hit ledge. The assumption is that the bottom of the ledge is more than four feet down, so the, the ledge isn't gonna move. So the ledge is stable, so you can pin the foundation to the ledge. But if you had footing that was only like, if you just poured a frost wall, there's only like a foot deep. If we had a really bad cold and you got ice underneath it, it would. Move the foundation from the water freezing into ice.
Uh, thank you, that shows my lack of understanding of the engineering here. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Klein, I. Um, I just, I'm, I'm hoping whatever drainage plan is going with this construction is significant. Because there's gonna be a lot of water relief that needs to be created and. Channeled and moved away from the pooling that the, Mr. Um. Potentially expressed the concern about. Um, because I have a feeling water's gonna be pooling all over around here, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Um, the applicant does have a geotech engineer, uh, 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 sorry. Not a geotech engineer, but the appropriate engineer for preparing drainage plants, they do have that on, on. On the project. And the engineering division does review those plans. Uh, are there other members of public who wish to address this application? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period. So as, as it said before, what the board has before it, this is an application for special permit under section five four two B six. The large addition, um, which this qualifies as, um, in order for the board to approve a large addition. Um, in addition to the standard. Uh, conditions for special permit found under section three, 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 we also have, uh, three additional findings that the board needs to make. Um, under section five, four, two, B six, um. So to, um. Before I review those, um, the board is in receipt of a letter from the abutting neighbor. Um, at one sixty-four Brattle Street, uh, there. This is the house that, um. During the course of the hearing, we determined is about eighteen feet away from the proposed addition, uh, they had to express some concern about. Um. Uh, access to sunlight and the, the solar angles, um. That wasn't really addressed, we didn't really address that too, too much, um, but it's something we should keep in mind as we're. Uh, reviewing the criteria for a large addition, um, because that sort of does come into the question. Mr. Hanlon?
So when I looked at the. At the place, at the, the grade there and the placement that of where the garage was going to be, it looked to me as if. The garage was, if anything, slightly lower. Than the elevation of the house next door and up the hill. Um, but of course, I'm the lawyer, so I only am good at looking at words, I don't good at looking at pictures. And I was wondering if my architect colleagues. Would verify that. It does seem to me that. That when you look at where the sun is likely to be, that you should not see. A substantial shading difference that would be due to this construction, but. But you guys could interpret that, inter- interpret the drawing better than I can.
Other, either of my colleagues like to take that one on, or. I can do it as well. I'm stalling while I load the drawing on my computer here, so.
We could all sing the Star Spangled Banner. We could all sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Would you like me to do a screen share? Would that help? Be faster?
Let's see, I think I have it here. Yeah, in retrospect, that might be faster.
Okay.
Looking specifically for the building plans, I think it's sheet eight, two, one.
Um, sorry, are you seeing the plans on your screen?
I am. So that one there, if you could back out a hair. Um, you don't have an elevation that is from farther out, right?
Uh, I, I do not, I did not include the entire elevation of the existing house. But that, but I did accurately locate the ridge. Yeah.
So for, for, to address the question that, um, that Mr. Hanlon had. So the existing ridge sort of being the left of the two yellow dots. Um, you sort of imagine that the, a budding house is somewhere just to the, off to the right of the sheet. Um, so a line from there to that point goes through where the garage is. So the garage is gonna have some impact on the amount of sunlight that's available. Um, but it's difficult to ascertain exactly what the impact is gonna be. Certainly during the summer months, it'll be negligible. In December, it'll probably be significant. But it's difficult, but without a full solar study, it's difficult to know. And a solar study is not typically something we would require, um, unless there was a specific concern.
Of course, right now, it would be true that there are the two trees that we discussed earlier, that would be located in this intermediate space.
Yep. And those trees would do the inverse, they would allow more light in the wintertime, but less in the summertime.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
You're welcome. All right. So, um. So under the requirements for large additions, the first of the three. Findings is that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. So I think the board can find that certainly it is in harmony with the other uses in the vicinity, it's just an enlargement of an existing house. Um, and as was noted by the, by the architect in his initial presentation. Uh, specific care was taken to, uh, the way that the, the form of the house, uh, the form of the addition was created. The height, uh, being subservient to the main house, um, and the, um. The slopes of the roofs are sort of in keeping with the original house, and it's really the overall design. Is of, you know, a series of forms making a, a house rather than, uh, sort of an agglomeration, so. I think that we could find that the addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. Uh, the second is considered dimensions and setbacks in relation to abutting structures and uses. So this is always sort of the trickier of the ones, um. Let me see here, if I can. This works, so this is the town's GIS map, hopefully that's coming up. So one fifty-six is the house in question, this is where the additional lot is gonna be. While it is. You know, clearly filling in a hole, um, it will be somewhat close to one sixty-four, um. But it's no more dense than some of the other sections, um, of Brattle Street. It would also note that it does sit a little bit lower, um, than one sixty-four, it's probably. By the time you get to the house, it's probably no more than three or four feet lower, uh, this. Side wall of the building that's between eighteen and twenty feet, um, so. It will certainly be noticeable, uh, it will be a very different appearance for the abutting neighbor. But it is nowhere near as tall, um, structures would be allowed by right, should one be developed by right on that site. Um, and then in terms of the overall, um, other abutting structures, um, it really has no impact. It really only has impact on the abutting neighbor at one sixty-four. And then the third is that the board is to consider conformity with the purposes of the bylaw. Uh, purposes of the bylaw are in section one, um, is to preserve, uh, the character of open space. Preserve, uh. Light, make the, make the, maintain the integrity of the, uh, the town to. Provide for an orderly increase in the tax base, um, I don't think there's anything that this proposed addition to the home. To provide a, uh, an enlarged kitchen, a garage. Um, and then the additional bedroom that would be, um, not in conforming with the purposes of the bylaw. Um, and then, those are the required findings under five, four, two, B, six, uh, under three, three, three. Uh, the first, that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. So what is being proposed, um, is a modest. Excuse me, a modest extension of the existing home, um, it's complicated because of the, the slope and cut, the addition going up the slope. Um, the, what this is doing is that the. It's sort of increasing the height relative to the adjacent property, from what it might normally be. The applicant has done a good deal of work to try to keep it as modest and as low as possible. Um, but would still create, uh, some impact on the abutting neighbor, um. Question is whether that, that adverse effect would outweigh its beneficial impacts, um. And that's something that the, the members of the board will have to determine for themselves. Uh, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district, um, certainly it is allowed by special permit under five, four, two, B six. Um, the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare, um, it's certainly desirable to, uh. Enlarge, to, uh, make a modest improvement to a home and a modest enlargement to a home to make, to improve its. Uh, livability for the residents, um, and for future residents in the town, and also, uh. Uh, to create an avenue for the town for additional revenues and to maintain the, uh. It's the, the residents of the town, um, in their homes. Um, will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Uh, this will actually consolidate two driveways into one, so it will actually slightly reduce, uh, the impact there, and hopefully will. Um, still allow for, uh, adequate public, uh, safety for pedestrians. I do note there's no sidewalks, um, on the stretch of Brattle Street. That the, will not overload any public system, um, it's not gonna impact any of the traditional public systems, as we have noted. Before, it will require, uh, stormwater analysis, um, and approval by the town engineer. Uh, because of the increase in the perv, imperious area on the site and the slope of the site. It will, uh, but the special regulations are required to use, requested use are fulfilled, those are the under five, four, two, B six, which we've covered earlier. Requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district, uh, we addressed that under, as previously. Well, that this is, we found this is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. Uh, required use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. It is just a, an expansion of a, of a home on an existing site, uh, it's unfortunate that we'll, there will be the loss of a couple of trees, uh, due to the. Due to this project, but, um, that will be addressed by the, uh, by the town's tree warden as a part of the tree planner review process. And the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, this will remain a single-family house in a single-family district. Um, and, uh. Although increasing the size of this house, it is still, uh, relatively modest in regards to, um. Homes not in the immediate vicinity, but homes in the district and within the town in general, um. As if those are the findings, um. And then, uh, should the board wish to vote in favor, are there the three standard conditions? Which we read into the record already this evening, are there any additional conditions, uh, that members of the board feel would be? Important. Um, we do have a, an addition that we sometimes impose, this is the board request the applicant work with the tree warden. To address compliance with the town's tree protection and preservation by law. We could certainly include that, although it just is essentially to note that they're, to do what the bylaw requires. Uh, similarly, there's a condition that board requests the applicant work with town engineer to address compliance with the town stormwater management by law. Uh, which they would otherwise have to do anyways. Is there any feeling for the board either way as to whether we should impose those two additional conditions? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and leave those in, um. So with that, is there any members of the board who have any concerns in regards to the question of whether the adverse effects, the pro. Uh, the adverse effects of the proposed use outweighing its beneficial impacts?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I think that we're in the situation where it's clear that there are some facts. Uh, and the question is whether they're unreasonable in some way. The answer can't be just that, uh, this application is observing what they could otherwise do by right. Because the whole purpose of this provision of bylaw is to take into a consideration that Arlington is built out. And what may be perfectly acceptable in an open field may not be equally acceptable. Uh, when your neighbor has a house, wherever your neighbor's house is. Um, I'm pretty much persuaded, though, that gi- given the. Uh, given the elevation here, where this house is considerably below the house, uh, uh, above it. Um, and given the space of around eighteen feet. Uh, that the buildings are far enough apart that they don't really unreasonably interfere with one another. You're, when you live in a densely populated place like, like Arlington. Uh, it always happens that one house is somewhat, uh, interfering with each other. We can't all imagine that we live back in the Garden of Eden. Uh, but it seems to me that here it's reasonable, I'm moved a little bit by the fact that. That, uh, it is represented to us that the occupant of the house that is located uphill. Uh, is an elderly person for whom shade is particularly important. Uh, but there's only so far you can go towards individualizing these things to people who happen to occupy a house. At any given time, uh, you know, for all I know, that a young family will occupy this house in ten years. So it seems to me that, that we meet the, that there's enough distance here. Uh, that has enough difference in grade, that any effect that we have, that this project has on the. On the other house, uh, is reasonable and not either inconsistent with the first provision of the special conditions. For large additions or the overall balance of harms and hardships. Um, in section three point three point three, so on that basis, I'm perfectly happy to support granting this.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Any other comments from the board? Being none, I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Hanlon if he'll be prepared to oversee the drafting of the decision in favor of approval of the special permit for one fifty-six Brattle.
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Thank you very much, um. So with that. I will move that the zoning board appeals for the town of Arlington, close the public hearing for docket three, eight, four, seven, one fifty-six Brattle Street. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So again, the board will prepare this, a draft decision for review by the board for voting at the, at the next hearing, which will be on May twenty-seventh. And then after that, the draft, the decision will, the signed decision will be forwarded to the town clerk for, uh, acceptance. And then, uh, from there, it can be, uh, picked up by the applicant, uh, for inspection services and also for filing with the registry of deeds. So with that, the vote on the, uh, to close, uh, one fifty-six Brattle Street, um, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so that matter is closed, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night's sleep.
Thanks so much. I wish I could say we're all adjourned, but we pushed off all our administrative items, so we get to do those now. But I promised to go quick. All right. So, moving on to administrative items, these items relate to the operation of the board and such, and we'll be conducted without. Input from the general public, board will not take up any new business in prior hearings, nor will the introduction of any new information on matters previously brought before the board. With that, the, uh, item two on our agenda is the decision, uh, for thirty-eight, uh, number thirty-eight forty, which is twenty-nine Hemlock Street. Uh, this was a decision drafted by, uh, Mr. Baronowski, submitted to the board for questions and comments, final version posted. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the decision for twenty-nine Hemlock Street? Seeing none, I move the board of appeals for the town of Arlington to approve and adopt the written decision for docket three, eight, four, zero, twenty-nine Hemlock Street. Which grants a special permit under section five, three, nine, D, in the zoning bylaw. Second? Thank you very much, still a blank. So vote of the board, um, Mr. Dupont?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hanlon? Mr. Hanlon?
Sorry, I said yes pretty loud, but the technology overrules me, yes.
Sorry, uh, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Brownhouse?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is approved, it brings the item three on our agenda, which is the, uh, decision three, eight, four, five. Uh, for three nineteen Appleton Street, this is a decision that was drafted by Mr. LeBlanc, submitted to the board for questions and comments, final version posted. Um, back to the board, are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the written decision for three nineteen Appleton? Seeing none, the zoning board of appeals, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington to approve and adopt the written decision. In docket three, eight, four, five, three nineteen Appleton Street, which grants a special permit under section five, three, nine, D, in the zoning bylaw.
Second.
A second? Hey, Chris Baronowski? Uh, so roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont? Mr. Hanlon? Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so that is approved, uh, brings us to item four on our agenda, the vote, um. The minutes, so these are minutes that were prepared by, uh, by Rolston for the board to review, um. Questions and comments in a final version posted, are there any questions or comments in regards to the minutes from our April twenty-second meeting? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve the minutes from the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the board. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, the vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon? Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are approved on those, um, and then an item that I glossed over last time. Um, when we were doing our elections, uh, was we did not elect a vice chair. And I had talked to Mr. Hanlon about the, about this, um, and whether or not we shouldn't have a, an elected vice chair. Or if we should just a point one, um, ad hoc as required, um. And I, I think, Pat, we decided we would, did we? Did you want to be nominated for vice chair, or did you want to leave it as a, as an open position?
Yes, I'd rather be, the, the reason I'm about to say this is not vanity. But as you, as you know, there's a lot of vice chairman-y stuff that has to do with being on phone calls and meetings that are not ad hoc. But just the normal things that come up, probably it would be more orderly if I were appointed to that position. Per se, rather than ad hoc.
So then I nominate Patrick Hanlon to serve as vice chair of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont, are there any additional nominations for the role of vice chair? Seeing none, uh, we'll do this by voice vote, oh, and I can't do it by voice vote, that's not, that's against the law, so it has to be by roll call vote. Uh, so vote of the board in favor of Mr. Hanlon for the position of vice chair. Uh, so vote the board in favor of Mr. Hanlon for the position of vice chair. Uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yeah.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, uh, congratulations to Mr. Hanlon for being re- elected as vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. Um, so coming up for the, that is the last of our administrative items, uh, coming up for the board, our next meeting is on May twenty-seventh. As Miss Ralston said there, I believe there's only one item on the agenda currently for the twenty-seventh. Um, and then June tenth, we have four new items plus the continuation of Thorndike Street. Um, and then we're into the, then we're into the summer at that point, fun and exciting. Um, just very brief town meeting update for members of the board. Um, we had put forward two articles uh, through the redevelopment board for approval. One was to sort of redraft the, um, residential, uh, residential parking guidelines under six, one, ten, A, that was approved last night. Um, and also to officially adopt the, the definition of building coverage as the definition for lot coverage, uh, that was also approved last night, so. Um, both of those things that we had wanted to get done, got done, um, and sometime in June, I'm gonna sit down with the head of the ARB and pester them about new things. So if there are things in the bylaw that have been uh, that you think need some clarification or some adjustment or complete and utter rewrite, uh, let me know and I'm happy to discuss those issues, um, with them.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon?
So I wanted to add to that last year, we had advocated the elimination of the chapter of the bylaw that provided for an inland wetlands uh, overlay district, uh, that was defeated last year. Uh, so the ARB, uh, showing considerable amount of spine brought it back this year and it was overwhelmingly accepted this year. Um, and second, I, as I, I have been reflecting, and I think others probably have too, of the problems that we have in the Thorndike case where, uh, the need to provide resiliency in flood areas is conflicting with the, uh, of the underlying the building heights, particularly building heightened stories, but that could easily be building heightened feet as well. Uh, and it both is an individual indication as the way in which resilience may interact with the zoning bylaw in a way that requires some kind of an accommodation. Uh, and once you enter into that general field of things, there may be other things that also are uh, potential conflicts between between a, uh, the, the bylaw and other aspects of resilience and resilience is obviously over the next few years going to be a big deal, not just, you know, both for public policy and because of, and for individual, for regulation of land. And it seems to me that, that at some point, people need to be thinking about this in a systematic way. And, uh, so I don't particularly have a proposal for what to do about the kinds of situation that has in Thorndike and we'll probably make some progress on that possibly as, as time goes on, but uh, this isn't the last case. We're gonna see something like that. And it would be useful if the ARB would sit down, would have, talk to whatever consultants that they need to, talk with us to the extent they need to and figure out the, and talk to the conservation commission and figure out sensible ways of reconciling the policies where they uh, where they conflict. It, it is sort of a thing that is needed in, in an area where climate change is happening. Resilience is increasingly important and, you know, uh, uh, land use that's based on drawing, on drawing sort of GIS pictures just doesn't quite achieve what we need to do to be adequately attentive to both land use and to, uh, and to, uh, uh, react in the climate change. So I hope we do pay attention to that in the future and maybe think of at least an agenda that the, uh, ARB could work with or potentially we could offer to have some of us, uh, deal with the ARB on this, if they, if the ARB is interested in doing it on that level. But it is something that we ought to be thinking about and we ought to actually see what other people are doing too. This, this can't be something that we thought on our own.
Yeah. Right. Well, thank you all for participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I'd especially like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Chapa, Mike Cunningham and Jaclyn Munson for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording of the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It's our understanding that the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at ACMI.tv within coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town. Arlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. To conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Submuted.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Dupont?
Uh, I just want to point out that you said last, uh, tonight's meeting, it was last night's meeting, but with that said, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the board is adjourned. Thank you also very, very much. I hope.